We will now reconvene the regular meeting for Lompoc City Council Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Mr. Malave, report from closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session tonight to discuss the three items on the closed session agenda. Council discussed those, gave direction to staff on all three items. No reportable action was taken. Councilmember Starbuck, for the record, recused himself from the real property negotiations item because he does own property within 500 feet of that item, but he participated in the other two items.
Thank you for that report. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, before we start the meeting, this is broadcast live on Comcast Channel 23, on the radio at KPEG 100.9 FM, and livestreamed on the internet from the cityoflompoc.com website. Click the City Council button, then view City Council meeting videos. If you wish to make a comment during oral communications or public communications of a specific agenda item, you may call 805-875-8201 and have three minutes to provide your comment on that item. You are also welcome to send emails regarding items on the agenda prior to the Tuesday of a council meeting at 4:00 PM to s_haddon@ci.lompoc.ca.us. And now we will return to our agenda with the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first one I want to do is just ask about a question here. There was a council request to look at bringing back a discussion on pension obligation bonds. So I've been working with the financial advisors. We've had them in before. They went through prior sessions last year, and they were well received. Talking to them, this is a very large topic. It's not something that you, I would suggest even covering it on a standard night because it could go on for some time. So my question to council would be, is my suggestion is to hold a special meeting just for this one item because there's a long, there's a lot of slides because they'll walk us through all of the different costs that are involved, the risks, the, you know, pros and cons and everything else. So I was going to suggest even from a, you know, sort of a throwback to the old days when people could come in, maybe on a Saturday, people might be more open to viewing a Zoom or on YouTube or whatever the case might be. So some dates I was just going to suggest was Saturday, March 20th, you know, from 9:00 to noon, something like that, or Wednesday, March 17th, which would be the day after the 16th council meeting, or Thursday, March 18th. Just throwing it out there, I do think it might be beneficial so they can take the time and walk you through it because it is substantial, I think, as a different type of item to listen to. So, does that sound like something the council would like to do to keep it a special meeting? Or just go ahead and we can have it on the 16th as just part of the regular agenda? If there are strava, we can...
Councilmember Ball?
I personally think that we should have it as a special meeting. It's a very complicated topic and issue, and the more that we can add transparency and allow the public to be involved and ask questions and understand whether it's a good fit for our community or not, I'd be in favor of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova?
I would also favor a special meeting.
All right, I will give you the third. So I think it's important to establish a date so that you can move forward. The dates suggested were either Saturday, March the 20th, or Wednesday the 17th, or Thursday, the 18th?
And those were the 20th that week, since we already had a council meeting on the 16th, I was just trying to keep it in that week.
Sure. I personally like the idea of Saturday, the 20th. Is there any conflicts for anyone on that date? Do we, do we know?
Yeah.
Councilmember Vega?
I like the 17th only because of my schedule, but...
So in the evening on the 17th? Okay. So I have one for the evening of the 17th. Councilmember Cordova?
I could commit to the evening of the 17th.
Okay. Any conflicts for you two on the evening of the 17th? Seeing, shaking of heads, no, it looks like. See if the consensus are available for the evening of the 17th.
I will do that. Thank you. Okay. Going on to other news, some good news. Public Works did receive a $7,000 landscape equipment electrification, can't say that, fund, grant from the Air Pollution Control District. It covers 60% of the pre-tax costs for handheld battery-operated landscaping equipment such as blowers, hedge trimmers, chainsaws, string trimmers, batteries and chargers. And you might see them, I see them out here with the leaf blowers. They're much quieter, which is really nice, but they last a very long time. It's a battery pack, not just the little attachments to the blowers. So it's really, it's really nice to have that. We're slowly moving over into that electrification. The Lompoc Fire Department received a little over $23,000 in PPE, which is your personal protection equipment, through a FEMA assistance grant to firefighters for COVID-19 gear. The department does want to say they're grateful to the Santa Barbara County Fire Department, who carried the major workload with respect to the grant submission, processing, purchasing and distribution, as this was a regional grant and all the different departments in the county did receive such equipment. So that was very nice. You might have seen over the weekend, the sinkhole or the subsidence, more so, sinkhole, I always picture Florida where the house gets sucked into it, but the subsidence at the Y, it is being repaired by Caltrans, and city crews did camera sewer lines and inspected other city infrastructure up there, just to see if there's any damage, but everything was good on our end. And Caltrans will continue to work on the repairs. I did not, I hadn't received like a finished date, but it is, you can see them up there working actively on it. There's also going to be, and this is for council as well as the public, so this will be a workshop with Lafco, the local area formation commission, on March 4th to discuss the Bailey Annexation Project that we first discussed back in 1998, I think it was. We're trying again to get this property annexed into the city. This will be open to anybody via the Zoom meeting. It's on the Lafco site. If you go up there, you can click on their link to get the Zoom meeting. And I would suggest council be on it. I would suggest all the different people in the city that are interested to be on it. Really need to see some support to make this project move forward. I'll be working with our city attorney and our community development planning to come up with a short presentation. We'll have a little bit of time to speak, not much, but we'll have our little say if we will. But I would like everybody to be on that if possible. And the last one on good economic news, so the Human Being, which is a coffee shop business, as well as Dutch Brothers Coffee, both those shops were approved by the Planning Commission. They're both located on H Street. One is the Human Beings on Laurel and H, and the other is going to be in the former Labatte Restaurant site. That building will come down and they'll be putting up a new building there. So that was a little economic development we're going on there. And that was all I had.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Mr. Trup, there was a, a lot of people in the public have approached me, several in groups, concerning the fireworks ordinance. I know we're bringing the ordinance back for review, but there was also, people had asked about the possibility of extending the application deadline because of the fact that we've only got two people that have put in for fireworks booths, didn't know, whatever else had happened. Could we elaborate on something we could possibly do to, with this?
Well, so right now, the way the ordinance is written is it states in there that the submission time is January, and I'm going to look at, is it 15th? Remember the dates? 15th to the first or second? So it's January, roughly January 15th to February 2nd for the submission for the upcoming July 4th period of time. So that's in the ordinance itself. So unless the city attorney says otherwise, what we'd have to do is come back, if that's what council wanted, with an emergency ordinance, to say that this is, you know, an emergency, it's critical, we need to open that back up and allow, and then we'd have a date from this time to this time to do that. Or if we did it under a normal ordinance, it would come back, but the timing would be presenting the ordinance with a first reading, second reading, then 30 more days. That puts you possibly into May, and then talking with our fire department, that really doesn't give them any time because of the process that these people have to go through submitting all the required reports and financials and everything else. That would be an incredible burden if it even is possible with the fire department. So the normal standard change in the ordinance would be difficult. So if you wanted to do it, that would be the only way is through the emergency ordinance.
Any other questions or concerns before we move on the agenda? Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. Consent calendar is considered to be routine and enacted after one motion in the form listed below, and there will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. And any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. We will open the floor for public comment on consent calendar. The number to call, 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, computer or radio. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication on consent calendar? Nothing, ma'am. Thank you. While we wait to see if there are any calls at 805-875-8201 for consent calendar public comment, there is an item that needs at least notice of recusal. Is this true, Mr. Malave?
Yes. Because it's on the consent calendar, Councilmember Starbuck does not need to leave the room. But Councilmember Starbuck does own property within 500 feet of the property that's the subject of item number four, so he should recuse himself on that item.
Thank you for that clarification.
That's why my light's on.
Seeing no calls, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To accept consent calendar. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but I will recuse on item four. I will not be voting on item four.
Thank you for that second and abstention from item four. Any additional questions or concerns or seeing none, let's vote. Victor, did you have a question?
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. That's okay. Just making sure. And that passes 5-0, and on item four, it is a 4-0-1.
And Mayor, if I, if I may, we did have, I forgot to mention, as we came back into the meeting, there was an issue with the streaming, not on our brand-new equipment, but on the YouTube side. They're on their platform, so I'm not sure if, our city clerk, have you heard any update? No, so...
So if anyone's having a problem, it's on the YouTube side, it's not with our new equipment?
Correct. Yes, our, our new equipment is running as it should, so it's on their platform, on their side, so...
We apologize for the modern technology staphylosis. Thanks for that, in case we were getting any calls at a later time for that. We have no staff presentations. We just had an announcement, so that takes care of announcements. So we'll move to oral communications. This is for anything that is not on the agenda. Number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your TV, PC or radio. Again, this is general oral communication. It is three minutes maximum. Did we have any written general oral communication? Nothing. Thank you. Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, computer or radio to avoid the feedback that normally happens. Seeing no one call, we will close oral communication and bring it back to the agenda. The next agenda item is number six. This is council appointment to the Planning Commission. We currently have two open positions, one for Councilmember Cordova and one for Councilmember Vega. Both expire March 15th, 2021, so any appointment that is made tonight will need to be reappointed if they're still interested come March 15th for the public's clarification. We do have one applicant, that is Ed Braxton, and he has indicated he is District One. Councilmember Cordova?
Wait, so you're saying that this would be, they have to reapply again?
So he can just say he wants to continue and his application's unfilled, and when we go to make the appointments in March, you, you suggest him and we approve him again? Because all resignation, all positions end as of March 15th and reappointments occur? He has submitted it, it is current, and he can send a notice to the clerk saying, "My application's on file and I'm interested in continuing." Is that correct?
We've received a second application for him for that purpose, yes.
Check, done already.
So I would like to move to have the council consider the appointment of Mr. Ed Braxton to be my representation on District One for the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Welcome aboard, Mr. Braxton. Item number seven is public hearing. Consideration of Planning Commission Recommendations for Zoning Code Text Amendments 20-02 to Title 17 zoning of the Lompoc Municipal Code and revisions to the Architectural Review Guidelines relating to permit requirements for certain restaurant alcohol service, regulations on mobile and sidewalk vendors, and small housing development projects, outdoor storage height regulations, bicycle parking for certain multifamily housing developments, street-side yard setback fence height, temporary sign regulations, and minor code changes to code terminology, and introduction of ordinance number 1679 (21). We have our planning manager, Mr. Halverson, to present.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that was definitely a mouthful, but we'll try to get through these amendments rather quickly. Just wanted to start by saying that the Planning Commission initiated last year some amendments after we adopted an entire comprehensive amendment to our zoning code. They saw some areas that needed some tweaking, and then, of course, the council too. There was an item, and even staff, saw some things that we needed to clean up. So we'll go ahead and talk about those items. One item that the Planning Commission brought up is, they were interested in having a more streamlined process for allowing restaurant uses to serve alcohol and the CC, that's the convenience center, without a minor use permit. The council, at the end of 2019, basically approved a carryover from the previous zoning code that required a minor use permit, so that's proposed to be just permitted. They'd still have to go through alcohol beverage control, they would still do a business tax certificate, but they wouldn't need the discretionary permit, although that is at a, at the director level. Also, there's removal and revision of certain application requirements related to sidewalk and vendor, mobile vendor permits. And also, in regards to sidewalk and mobile vendor amendments, I'm not going to go through all of them, but essentially in order to summarize is the Planning Commission was interested in anything that was a duplicate, for example, maybe at the state or county level, such as proof of insurance and other things that were, seem repetitive. They wanted to streamline it, and so those are reflected in your staff report this evening. Staff looked at it again as well and thought that we could turn it around quicker, and instead of a 30-day turnaround, be 15. And staff also looked at this section of the code and thought, wow, renewing it every year is a little burdensome, so we went ahead and suggested to the Planning Commission that we bump it up to three years, and they seemed to like that. Other things this evening are an exemption for housing developments that are six or less units. As we all know, we're in a housing crisis in the state of California, and I'll just let you know right now, last year, we only built 10 units. We actually built 12, but we lost two. So 10 units. So, yeah, it's, it's kind of sad, but we're, we're trying to ramp up, and I think this amendment allowing those type of projects that are smaller, six or less, would not need to go to the Planning Commission. They would go straight to the building counter and apply for a building permit. And those are for the R2, R3, and even the MU zone allows residential, that's the mixed-use zone. Of course, not something that's part of a subdivision. Also, there's a requirement that's been in the Architectural Review Guidelines of the city for quite a while, and it's requiring, when you have a two-story home next to a one-story, that the second story is supposed to be set back a little bit. The guidelines don't say how much, but it says it should be set back. I gave a little photo here just because the graphic is, speaks very loudly. You can see next door, although maybe not the best picture because it's hard to tell, but that is a two-story house on the left and a single story on the right. Our architectural design guidelines say that the second story should be stepped back. The Planning Commission, that came up with one of the projects, and they felt like a two-story can be two stories without being set back, even if it's next to a one-story. Also, some items came up with outdoor storage, which we ran by the fire department, talked to the Planning Commission as well, and there are times where industrial businesses, whether they're on a business park or a straight industrial zone, have outdoor storage, and the commission wanted some more flexibility in those zones and allowed increased height. Planning looked at that, looked at that, and we had a little bit of input in regards to one that's adjacent to residential, and of course, coordinating with the fire department, but we were able to come up with something that allowed increased height. Bicycle parking also came up and seemed to be a little bit of a sticky issue where, why require it for smaller projects? So if it's four or less units, you don't have to provide bars. Basically, bicycle parking is a bicycle rack, so larger projects would need to provide a bicycle rack. And I just want to clarify, I actually made a mistake, but I want to clarify regarding the fence height amendment, the, when the council approved amendments to our code, they did increase fence height to eight feet, but there was an error in the citations where the side street setbacks was only three, three feet, and it really should have been six. Previous code allowed six, so the commission said, yeah, I'll put it back. And then also, they wanted some flexibility around busier streets, and I'm going to show a quick photo of an example of a, this is actually the corner of A Street in Central. Those are minor arterials, and so, I don't know if my laser printer will work, but they wanted to have the ability, like, this is a pretty low wall, and along busier streets such as arterials and minor arterials to allow those fences or walls to go up to eight. So that's also part of the amendment. Also, with the help of the city attorney's office, we did find some edits in incorrect terminology and staff, other staff members, we found some, some corrections, so we wanted to clean that up. And then, the Architectural Review Guidelines are already discussed, but they mirror one another, zoning code and the architectural guidelines, so we would make, have to amend both of those to make sure they're consistent. Lastly, is temporary signs. So this was brought up by the council last year, and there definitely seemed to be a need for more flexibility in regards to temporary signs, specifically banner signs and temporary yard signs. So I'm just going to real quickly go through a couple photos to go through those changes. So for banner signs, there's a proposed increase in sign area from 30 to 36 square feet. No sign permit required for banner signs that are 32 square feet or less. We created a new process, if the council approves these amendments, that we could do a no-fee over-the-counter permit for banner signs that are greater than 32 square feet. So they wouldn't have to do permit, it would be a simple form, as long as they met the sign area requirements, location, et cetera. And then length of time was, of the display was increased from 30 to 60 consecutive days, and that could be twice per calendar year. This is just an example of a banner. The idea is, you know, temporary because they should eventually have a permanent sign. I have a feeling that sign is still up today. So that's not the goal. The goal is to have a permanent sign. Just another example of a banner there on a gas canopy. That's not in Lompoc, I don't believe. Maybe it is. Yard signs, this is the last of the amendments. Now, these yard signs are also, can be political signs. I have some, some photos of last year's election and some signs, so I just wanted to talk about that real briefly. So in regards to yard signs, we increased allowable number from one to 10. That seems like a lot, but the reason why we wrote that in is because during certain periods of time, like the election, you can see, the photo on the left, I think that's nine signs on that particular site, and that's along H Street. And then the one to the right is in the Old Town, the Old Town, and I think there's probably at least six signs there. So we upped the number, we increased the sign area up to 32 square feet. A lot of the lumber, Home Depot, other hardware stores are, are sold in eight-by-four sheets, so 32 square feet seemed natural. And no sign permit required. I repeat, no sign permit required. This is a corner of H and Ocean, lots of signs on there. Those are yard signs. I already showed you that photo. This is just another example of a yard sign. That's actually less than 32 square feet. And lastly, the staff would, just recommends to receive and consider the approval of Planning Commission Recommendations with the first reading of Ordinance 167921, or provide other direction. That concludes the staff report, and we're available for any questions at this time. That concludes the staff report, and we're available for any questions at this time.
Thank you for the overview. Before we break it down, because there are so many moving parts, is there anything in very specific that any council member has a question about? Councilmember Cordova.
Brian, for the restaurant alcohol permit, I know the staff report mentions something about eliminating the, the applicant to have to go through the city to get their permitting, but they're still required, you mentioned, to do it through the alcoholic beverage control, which still requires them to go through the process of posting, that there is going to be alcohol sales on that premises, and then if it's in or near, I want to say five hundred feet, I've done this before, from residences, then you actually have to mail out to each of... But, but that's an ABC, so they would still have to do that through the ABC. What, what we're doing is just streamlining it. So like you said, there's no redundancy for us to try to control something that they've, they've, they're already having to go through, through a different agency, whether it be county health or ABC, correct?
Correct. For this particular one, not so much redundancy. It is a different process with the city. But what it does is it streamlines it. They don't have to do, you know, that minor use permit. So our process is a little different in the sense of, we would have a, an opportunity for the public to comment. I don't know with ABC, their commenting process, so... And then, of course, conditions of approval. That's probably the, probably the biggest one, is to put conditions of approval on, on that particular use, serving alcohol. Could be hours, limiting the hours. It could be a variety of different things.
Yeah. So my concern would be that our residents have the opportunity to comment or be aware that there is going to be alcohol sales coming in their area. But I just want to be able to assure the public and let them know that through the ABC process, they are going to see that side of it happen anyhow, because it does require the posting, at least what I've been through, and it does require notification within certain feet of residence, so... And then I had another one. For the sign one, for the temporary signs, we would be moving away from, you mentioned, no fee to apply for the permit, correct?
That's correct. If you meet the parameters, it's not a free-for-all, meaning if someone came in with something really huge, then that wouldn't be eligible.
So it says no sign permit is required if the sign is thirty-two square feet or less. Okay. So if it's more than that, for whatever reason, then they would have to get a permit, and they would have to pay for a permit fee, correct? They would be paying for it if it's above the thirty-two.
So, yeah, that's a good question. Right now, I just have the, the table in front of me. Now, are you talking about yard signs, or are you talking about banners?
No, I'm talking about the thirty-two square feet, because actually, on here, it says if greater than thirty-two square feet, no fee permit is required.
Right. So if they're going to go greater than that, then most likely, I would say yes, we would need a permit. But at the same time, I believe we're making that as a max. Let me just double-check real quickly. Okay, he corrected me. Yeah, it's for the yard, but not the banner.
Yeah, because I feel like it's contradicting if we're saying that no sign permit is required. We're lifting it from thirty to thirty-two, right?
Right.
And then, we're saying no permit required, and, which means that they're not having to pay a fee. But then it says if greater than thirty-two square feet, no permit is also required. So then why not just make it a free-for-all?
Well, for, for the banner, it, it clearly says if it's greater than thirty-two, you're going to need to get a permit.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misread that. I'm so sorry.
It's for greater than thirty-two square feet.
A no-fee permit.
Right. So we're trying to keep it simple. If they could meet the thirty-two square feet, then make it simple for them. But if they're going to go greater, then we would go ahead and require a sign permit.
But they don't have to pay a fee?
Correct.
I don't know, that doesn't make sense to me, because we're doing the work of having to permit them, so there should still be a fee, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, that's something that, if the council wants, we certainly can change. But that's, that's on, on the table now.
I believe, Councilmember Cordova and Brian, isn't that what the Planning Commission recommended?
Correct.
It's a, it's a commission recommendation, I understand, or a staff recommendation?
Yeah, I just feel like there's no cost recovery there on that. And there's a benefit, obviously, to someone wanting to go greater, so...
Does anybody else agree with Councilmember Cordova in that we could make that recommendation, given this is the subject area? Yes?
We need to take public comment before there are any agreements or motions, because this is a public hearing.
You are correct. Any other questions on the agenda item before we go to public comment? Seeing none, then we will close questions for now with staff and hold to return to those and potential motions till after public comment. If you would like to comment on item seven and these updates, please call eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one, eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one. Remember to mute your television, computer, or radio. Were there any written communications on item seven?
No, ma'am.
Again, this is public comment on item number seven, which is amendments to the zoning code. Eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one, eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one. Hearing no calls and having no written public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and potential changes or direction provided to staff. So before we close that discussion, Councilmember Cordova had brought up the, under banner signs, that there was a recommendation from the Planning Commission for no fee for over-the-counter permits if it was greater than thirty-two square feet, and that, given this would be potentially work on staff's part despite no fee, that there should be some cost recovery to this. I support some cost recovery, given there is a process, so I would support your concept of changing it from no fee to a low fee, just because, yeah, it might be abused at a level that still creates a ton of staff work with no oversight at the moment. Do we know offhand what that current fee might look like, Mr. Halverson?
No, I don't. I don't have the fee schedule in, in front of me, but let me just clarify. So the form that we've already kind of drafted, but we haven't released yet, obviously, until the council approves it. The planner would walk to the counter, and it's a one-page form. Before I came to Lompoc, I did this in another city. They would simply state the size. They would sign their name, date it, et cetera. And they would say when it was going to be taken down. So in regards to the amount of staff time, they wouldn't, you know, take it into the counter and then go back to their desk, et cetera, et cetera. It's basically, it should be about a five-minute look, looksee at that form. They make a copy, the customer walks away, they file it away. So I, I just want to bring that to your attention. It's a real simple process. We're trying to make it really, really simple. So we could certainly do a fee, but I just, I didn't know if you, the form that we were going to do, if you still wanted to charge for that.
So that is different from what we have many of us gone through when we've gone through a process. So given that, does that change your consideration of wanting to recover costs? Councilmember Cordova.
Yeah, that's fine. Assuming, of course, that anything greater than the thirty-two feet still has to adhere to whatever lot size or acreage or whatever is, restrictions are already there in place through the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
All right.
All right, so that request has been pulled back. Any other concerns, discussion points about these recommendations? Councilmember Vega.
If it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Planning Commission's recommendations.
It is appropriate. I'm not sure if Councilmember Ball will have a second. He may have questions, but it is appropriate to make it...
Oh, yeah, sorry, I didn't see.
No, no, no. You're welcome to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We may still have discussion. So there is a motion on the floor. You can... Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
I promise I'll be quick on this. I think it's important, the community is always looking for a way to find good news locally. The process is better, it's easier. The red tape that used to exist is getting cleaned up a little bit here. Do you guys, maybe Brian or Christie, do you mind elaborating on just two of the, the recommendations? And that is the upgrade or the update to both the restaurant serving alcohol or a sidewalk vendor. It's a pretty dramatic change here, going from one year to three years, and a couple of these changes in terms of not having a higher fee on a certain thing. That's, that's great news. So for those in Lompoc looking to see if we're changing or if something is changing to make it easier to do business, at least in this one category, this is a, a pretty dramatic improvement. Is there any highlights that you want to?
Councilmember Ball, I'd be more than happy to go into those a little bit more with you. Definitely, there's a streamlining process when it comes to a vendor permit. Let me just give a couple examples. There, there are things that we would ask for, like a proof of insurance policy. Streamline that, take that out. There is also requirements for... This was kind of interesting. I, I really don't know why this went in the code, except for they thought at the time that it would be a safety thing. But heating and cooking equipment shall be inspected annually by a qualified independent service for fuel leaks and condition of piping brackets and burners. And it goes on a little bit more, but they have to get a, a county health permit. So the commission looked at things and said, well, if they need to go through the county and get a county health permit, and they're looking at those things, so let's try to take some of those things out. If they have a vehicle, they're going to have to have insurance policy, so take that out. So these are things that have helped to streamline it. And then staff came up with reducing the number of days as well. So these are things that have helped, you know, streamline the process so that it can be a little easier for people that come in, especially the amount of time they're going to have to wait. That has been a complaint. Now, albeit with, with limited staff, we sometimes need that extra time, but that's another one that's, that's really streamlined. And then your second, second item was?
It's just, I just wanted to get a couple highlights of the, the updates. I think that ultimately, this is a benefit both to the consumer, to the person potentially trying to start a business. But this is also beneficial in terms of saving on staff time, and that's the other benefit to these recommendations, is that, yes, while there may be an area or two that we could definitely talk about fees, overall, these recommendations hopefully really streamline the process, saving you guys some time as well, to be able to focus on some of the bigger stuff as well. I just wanted to...
Absolutely. Councilmember Ball, one of the, probably the most important in these amendments is streamlining housing projects. So, so let's say someone has an R-two, R-three lot, and they're wanting to add a duplex, maybe a triplex. You might think that they're kind of taking the power away from the Planning Commission, but in fact, it's, you know, going to allow those smaller projects to go straight to a building permit submittal. So that's going to save them some money, and it's going to save them some time. And there's actually at least maybe three or four people that are kind of waiting at the wings that have those smaller projects that want to not have to pay that cost, not have to wait for that time. And so that, that's a huge, huge change in, in the city code and the architectural review guidelines that we didn't have before, so...
Thank you. I just want to commend the former council, or the prior council and the Planning Commission that worked on this, and, and all of you and the staff that had input on this. This is a step in the right direction, and I hope it's one of many steps as we continue to update our, our code to make it easier to do business.
You sure you don't want to provide a second to the...
I'll provide a second.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Is there any additional?
You know, I'd, I'd like to tee off on what Councilman Ball said. You know, I'm in the real estate business, and I can see all of these are positive changes. These are great clarifications, as you mentioned. We have fence heights, we have mobile vendor simplifications. We have clarifications to get the minor use permit out of the way of the ABC, which does require mailouts within five hundred square feet. And I, I believe it does have to come back to the police department to sign off on that. So the city is involved and part of that with anything with alcohol. So I, I believe that that is a positive change in what we want as far as business-friendly and making people that are afraid of city hall, we want them to come in and get their projects done. So thank you so much for the second also. But I did want to clarify, I think we're going in the, that's exactly the direction I think we need to go in. And we need to let people know that these things are happening.
All right. So we've discussed, we've moved, we've seconded. Any additional questions or concerns before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Thank you to both the Planning Commission and staff for the work involved in pulling all that together. Keep up that work. Item number eight is a council request. Physicians and funding allocation changes in the Community Development Department. Amendment to the city's compensation and classification plans to include reinstatement of the Community Relations Manager, Public Information Officer, and deletion of the Grant Writer job classification and compensation. Adoption of resolution number sixty-three eighty-three parentheses twenty-one. And I see that it's actually our human resources director.
Madam Mayor, I've asked the, our human resources manager to present this, but I would like to say, and I'll, I'll be able to answer any questions afterwards. I do appreciate this. This is another additional sort of position I've been taking on to try and be the PIO, and this, this will be a big benefit for myself. It frees up some more time for myself. But I think it's just a good step forward for the, for the city to have someone who can actually be the official PIO. But I'll let Gabe talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we are presenting for consideration to reestablish the Community Relations Public Information Officer classification. This is a classification that we had prior to this budget cycle that we're currently in. And during the meeting of December fifteenth, a motion was approved by the council to bring back a future agenda item to consider reinstatement of the Community Relations Manager slash PIO, Public Information Officer position. So what we're asking is consideration, if the council would like to move forward, would be reinstating the Community Relations Manager, Public Information Officer classification. The Grant Writer position will be deleted, and the duties of the Grant Writer will fall under the Development Program Specialist One-Two position with assistance from the, from the Community Relations Manager slash Public Information Officer to help write the grants and get the narrative out. There is no fiscal impact, since the reclassification was budgeted during, or the classification was budgeted during the biennial budget for fiscal year nineteen through twenty-one, so we're just going to reallocate that position. And there, there will be future budgetary savings on future budgets going forward. So with that, if there's any questions, I know City Manager Troop's here to answer. Any ICAN or our Community Development Director, Kristi Alacron, can answer.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Just a, a couple of questions here. How does this change the pay? I, what are the sources? What are the sources now? Who pays what out of this? This wasn't listed-
This will actually be, sorry, this will actually be a savings to the city's general fund as-
So, it's gonna pick up more out of the enterprises to pay?
Right. So, it'll, it'll be allocated out to all the different funds, rather than just, as it currently is as a grant writer, it was paid for strictly through the, the general fund.
So, office space is included through enterprise now, and the relief comes off of the general fund?
Correct.
Because, I mean, I see the budget resolution here, but it doesn't go into the actual financing of the position. So, that's what my question was on this.
I'll let Dean do it.
Well, that was, you only have a couple months left in the budget, but, I mean, really, we could allocate out that small portion to the general fund or to the utilities. I wasn't planning on doing, I was just planning on leaving the budget the way it is and, and then put it, correct it in the next budget cycle as allocated, like the other city administrator positions are.
So, now we have somebody in a position that can write the city's vision statement, huh?
She will be a big help, yes.
Councilmember Cordova.
I personally see the need for a public information officer. I was really, I was against the decision to remove it. However, I, and I am glad to hear that grant writing is not going to go away, because I think that's a major area for the city to continue to obviously seek grants and, and do that, that work. So, I'm appreciative of Ms. Alarcon being able to continue that on. I do think it's a little premature to, or, well, because like Dean just said, we're, we're just a few months away from the end of this budget cycle. I think it could have waited. That's, the assumption is we're, we're reclassifying this position right now, but we're about to go into budget season, and we don't know what's gonna happen and what numbers Dean is gonna come back with and what positions we'll be back in the, you know, in discussion with. So, I would have personally waited until the end of the budget cycle, but I understand the need for it right now. But again, if you're taking, if you're not even gonna make the adjustment to this budget and you're gonna wait until the other budget, it kind of proves my point that this is something that could have waited.
If I could to, to interject right there. It would be good to have that decision made now, because as I formulate and put the budget together, it's very time-consuming due to the allocation. That's why I probably wouldn't do it, because it takes one person almost two weeks to input all the numbers and allocate them all out. So, it would be nice to have that ahead of the budget, so I can actually allocate that position out.
Assuming that that position stays again in the next budget cycle?
Yes.
Assuming. Again, we want it to stay. I'm just saying that we, I saw it go away, so I think it's a little, you know, presumptuous to do it right now, but I, I agree with having it on.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I'll just be straight up about this. We should have had this in place the whole time. We're in the most stressful time of our lifetimes, if not two or three generations. We need clear and concise, articulate communication from the city. The city manager does not have an assistant city manager. So, again, him having to take the forward, public-facing role here is diluting his effectiveness to do his job. I think it's incredibly important, we should commit absolutely now or in a couple months, whenever, but we need to have a city that can accurately communicate with its citizens with clarity, and I think this will go a long way in helping that.
I'm just gonna say I agree, and we're gonna go to public comment. So, the number to call for item number eight is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. Remember to mute your television, computer, or radio, so the feedback doesn't interfere, interfere with us being able to hear you. Were there any written communications on item eight?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Again, the number to call for public comment on item number eight is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. You have three minutes to comment on item eight. Remember to mute your television, computer, or radio to reduce the feedback that interferes with our ability to hear your comment. Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. Are you ready to provide public comment?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, you have three minutes, please.
I'm Kathy Howard. I'm gonna make this very short. I'm in support of allocating this position now, and whoever it is allocated to needs to be communicating with the public often and with fervor, because they don't know what's going on, what's going on. So, please, please, please pass it and let the community know what you're doing. Thank you.
The number to call is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. And remember to mute your television, computer, or radio when your call is put through. Seeing no additional calls, we'll close public comment on item eight and bring it back to council. Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to say that, again, I'm not against re, restating this position. However, in my early time on council, and this was, this was in the moment in time when Ms. Alarcon was not here, I know on several occasions, I heard when council requested, you know, that staff go out and get grants or seek grants, I know that some of the feedback was, well, we don't have someone in that position, we don't have someone identified to do that. And so, again, I see the need for both things, so I'm not diminishing the PIO position at all. And I was, again, in, I've always been in favor of having that position. I just wanted to make sure that we are also not creating another hole. So, again, I appreciate Ms. Alarcon's ability to take on that task and continue, because that's equally important to me as a council member.
So, for some clarity, I think it's important for the community to understand, we'll actually now have a team working on grant writing. You already have individuals in some departments that work on grants because of very specific areas such as utilities. They often work on their own grant process because of how detailed it is. Having a PIO is important to the grant process, because that person is talented at writing and crafting stories. And so, them contributing to a grant application, as well as generating new stories that can be attached to those grant applications about successful programs or the need for those programs go hand in hand. And then the fact that you have already identified, hired, and have an individual on staff who is already working in partnership with other departments to now take on an additional layer that knows grant management is the bigger part of it, is even after you get a grant, it's really key to managing it and making it so that you get other grants, because you're also evaluated for whether or not you're successful with the grants you do receive as to whether you qualify and receive others. So, just for clarity, I know you're head nodding, but so that the public hears it, Kristi, can you at least confirm that now we actually have a team that will work on grants that might mean a more successful result?
So, we have been working as a team, even with Samantha as the grant writer. I don't think it was any secret that Samantha was coming into the grant writing field new. So, we've been working very closely together. She's done a few all off on her own, but at the same time, it, for those big grants, it is a total team approach. And the piece that I feel like we were always missing was that hub, that person who wasn't that high level, but maybe kind of that entry level, mid-level, that would be, act as the hub of the grant opportunity. So, have the time to research every single grant opportunity that comes in, and rather than have the police chief take an hour of his time to read a notice of funding availability, he can just shoot it on over to that person and say, hey, have a look at this. What are the ins and outs? Do we qualify? So, that's like the first entry piece into the puzzle. And then for her to compile, who are the players? It's gonna be PD, somebody from PD needs to provide the technical piece. Samantha will need to be involved as a community relations person, if there is any public input required. How do we get surveys out in light of COVID? How do we receive public input in light of COVID? And even in irregular, you know, day-to-day operations, when we go back to non-COVID time, which I hope happens someday. And then there's the finance piece, and then there's just that grant techie piece where you know what we can and cannot do. And so, I, I think, you know, I can provide that leadership. We've already been doing federal and state grants really well. Samantha has helped immensely in helping us compile a few different planning grants, the Prop sixty-four million dollar grant, the Beatty Park grant, which we saw how lovely that is all turning out. And then we have about three more statewide park grants that we're gonna be submitting in March. So, as much as I wanna say, yay, Samantha, you're gonna be a PIO, and that's all you're gonna do, as grant opportunities arise, she will still be part of our team when it comes to grant writing, and that's how we do a lot of things here in Lompoc.
And so, I think that's really important, is to understand that multiple hats are being worn by many of our staff, and that losing a public information officer really showed a failure on our part during COVID, because it's even, it's important on regular times to communicate to the public, but during COVID, it became really the only tool we had, was to utilize getting the message out. And so, putting that on top of all the other things that our city manager was doing was really not making us the most communicative council and city. So, I, I think bringing it back sooner, making sure that we have told staff, especially in the finance department, that we, we support this concept and we like to see it budgeted for the next budget cycle, really is a lesson learned that I really hope that as a community, they, 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 they receive the information they need. This is the true goal. It's public information officer, it's community relations manager, and that's one of our biggest roles, is to make sure the community is aware, not only of what we're doing here, but what the city as a whole does for them, and what their resources and outlets, and where they can get additional support. And we need to do a better job of getting that out there, and that's, this is a key role in doing that. So, thank you for all that work. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, just real quick, I had a chance to ask you about, about the grant stuff, and I've been around Lompoc long enough to know how the news sometimes tends to work. I can imagine tomorrow hearing that the city council fired a grant writer and banned all applications for grants, and that's obviously not what's happening here. Can you elaborate a little bit more? Are we changing the fervor or the passion for pursuing grants at all?
Absolutely not. If anything, I think this change is creating a better structure to evaluate grant opportunities, because it's not all just being dumped on one person. It's now being spread strategically, so we're utilizing the highest technical level and knowledge base for each of the pieces. You know, as a grant writer, Samantha didn't know stuff about our budget and the financial and the audit requirements and match requirements. She also doesn't know what goes into a planning document such, such as the housing element or planning policies. Our last two grants we wrote, we had to pull the planning manager in, and we had to walk through some of those technical deliverable pieces. We had to pull finance in. So, no matter what you're pulling from those other people, it just doesn't make sense to have one person, especially who could be utilized doing community relations and public information, as well as, not to mention, she handles a lot of our website stuff, to, restrict her to just do this little piece when we could do it. And I'll have to add that the Development Program Specialist is a hundred percent grant-funded. So, as long as we can keep this machine going of getting more grants and being successful, we could take a little piece of each of those grants and continue to fund that Development Program Specialist and keep a hundred percent grant-funded position that is our, our lead, our hub, our coordinator for grants.
That's an additional great point. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. And, and you're right, it is sustainable due to the admin portion of grants. And that's, a lot of people say, well, you don't wanna fund positions off grants, but in this scenario, it is a funding mechanism associated with the grant applications typically, is that you have to set aside amounts from the grant to support the administration of it. And so, this is one of those rare cases where you can grant fund sustainably a position and therefore not create an additional burden on any of the departments, especially the general fund. Okay, awesome. Councilmember Vega.
You know, if we're going to move forward with the grant, with the funding of the PIO, it seems like it would be a benefit to her and everyone else if her job description was clarified for her. It seems like we've been watered down by using, utilizing people for several things. As you mentioned, she was public information officer, she is a community person out there, involvement there with surveys and things. But, you know, to be a PIO and to be a community liaison and to be a webmaster, it doesn't seem like it's cohesive enough to getting the positive news out. Councilman Ball out there asked a question earlier about what the Planning Commission recommended and the Building Department did, and those are all positive things. You know, I think that those are things that sell Lompoc, so I think we'll have to look at it as, during COVID, we looked at social media, which we've never looked at it before, like this with Zoom and everything. So, I have to look at it as social media or social currency. So, I think there's value to our social media information out there that is usable information, not just creating a story to make someone happy and smile. We need to pre, we need to make sure that anything positive here can sometimes maybe possibly override some of the negative that's come into the city sometimes. Okay, there's always gonna be negative, there's gonna be crime, there's gonna be this, but, you know, our, our positive seems to be lost in something else. And I think that our, I'd like to draw a line in the sand that says, hey, this was great, what we did with planning, and we, we took the recommendations, everybody kind of agreed, but it was always positive for the building aspect, for the, for the homeowner that was afraid of City Hall, for anybody that wanted to open a restaurant, and they were afraid they were gonna have to go through this process, they just streamlined the process. I think that would be a direction that we need to focus on, to sell Lompoc, so we can create an economic balance that we can actually bolster ourselves, because without money and funding and revenues, we can't do anything here. So, I think that if we focus on the value that this could be, instead of, you know, you don't want her just to be the spokesman for the city manager, you want him, want it to be more focused on other things. Anyway, that's my point. I mean, I just think that we can do a little bit better job on that one, helping her focus on what her job is and how to sell Lompoc. And again, I call it social currency. So, thank you.
I will entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion.
To recommend, accept staff recommendation?
To recommend that we follow the staff recommendation. Thank you for your help.
Do I have a second on that? Councilmember Cordova.
Second.
Awesome. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. All right. Item number nine, Positions and Funding Allocation Changes in Community Development Building Division. Amendment to the city's compensation and classification plans to include the adoption of the Permit Coordinator Building Inspector, Plans Examiner Building Inspector Positions, and deletion of the Building Inspector and Senior Building Inspector and Development Service Assistant One Two Position- and development service assistant one, two positions, including job classifications and compensation, adoption of resolution number 6384 parentheses 21. And it says city manager, so we'll start with you.
Now, this one I'm going to let Christie and our planning manager discuss because it is more detail.
Thank you.
Where did Brian? I'm sorry, Eric.
So Eric, you're up. So please go ahead and come to the-
Sorry, I was used to Brian. Eric will be the one.
You could sit here. So this is a recommendation for council to reorganize the building division of the community development department, approve the reallocation of positions within the department's budget, which would be establishing a permit coordinator slash building inspector and the plans examiner slash building inspector classification, position allocations and salaries. We would be deleting the building inspector and the senior building inspector and the development services assistant one slash two job classification, along with the position allocations and salaries. So to kind of give you guys a little bit of background on why the building division is looking to do this is we went out for recruitment a while back ago when our positions were initially approved in the budget and that was the building inspector position. We were not successful in attracting qualified candidates. I, I hate to say it, but attracting any candidates. The ones we did get were not qualified. And I don't think they're the caliber of employee that we would want out there in our community representing the city's development team. So we went back to the drawing board. Eric and I went round and round on how do we do more with little dollars? And how do we make this work? We recently received notice from our counterstaff, which is the development services assistant position, and that he had accepted a job in another city. So we would be losing him quite quickly here. And we realized we were glad that we started the ball rolling on this process. So what this will do, and so I want, I want to say really quickly, every time a applicant comes up here and complains to council that they've gone through eight building officials, and every building official gives them a different guidance or a different determination, I'm hearing that frustration loud and clear, and we are trying to correct that. And the best way to do that is to have some consistency within our building division. And that means not only consistency, but a qualified talent pool of employees that can learn, train, operate independently, and as well as creating some succession planning opportunities for the division. And so the best way to do that, we felt, was to eliminate one position and create these two higher positions that would allow for utilizing that salary savings at the lower level to be spread across those higher two levels. And hopefully, we're, you know, our fingers crossed, we get a good qualified candidate pool for this position. With regards to the impacts to the budget, the rest of this budget, you're, you're not going to see any impacts because we never recruited a building inspector or plans examiner. So we have those salary savings. And then when we go into the next two-year budget cycle, we will obviously review the salary and benefits and try to create a balance. But I, I have to stress that, and I don't want to put Eric on the spot, but I, I think you've all heard it from either Jim or myself, and that is that we have one building official. We expect him to do reports and he's in the field almost every day doing building inspections. He coordinates plan checks. He tries to train staff. And the huge concern comes from that we have 389 residential units about to come online. So they're going to be at some point of construction here within the next year. There's no way we can sustain operations as we are currently staffed. And then we have 13 commercial projects coming online. And these are big valuation projects. Many of them are very complex, not like your typical tenant improvement you might see, since our new tenant improvement commercial projects we're seeing are oftentimes cannabis projects. And those projects are far more complex for the building division to plan check. And then also to, you know, conduct the inspections on. So we, this, this comes as a way to keep moving forward on improving our customer service for the city of Long Polk's building division, create that economic stimulus which occurs every time we have a applicant get through a building process, build their building, open up, start creating some sales tax revenue. The faster we can get through these projects, the faster we're going to benefit. So I ask that council consider adopting resolution number 638421, which will create the positions and amend the compensation plans and approve and adopt the proposed reorganization. Or you always have the option of providing an alternate direction. So Gabe can answer questions regarding the human resources piece. I have Eric here to speak to any of the kind of operational building questions you may have. And I'm here to answer anywhere where I can.
Thank you for that presentation and for finding a creative way to address the issues we're encountering. So I appreciate the proactivity. Councilmember Ball.
Thank you for that presentation. I apologize, Eric. I don't, I've read your last name on the thing and I've forgotten it. I apologize, but-
Hagan.
Thank you. Do you mind if I call you Eric?
Not at all.
Okay, great. So I just want everyone watching and paying attention to, to realize that we have a lot of business coming down the pipeline here. And let me just throw out a couple of examples. Give me a rough idea of how many cannabis applications we've had since day one. Stacy, know that roughly?
Total applications?
Sure.
We're at 50.
50, right. So we have one person in the entire planning department, building department, right? One person, one person, right. And, and I want to point out a pattern here. I think we only have maybe, on a, on a good day, we have an amazing fire marshal. We have one fire marshal, I think, right? And then from the police department, do we have anybody on a team that is helping out in cannabis sector? Probably not. Maybe a little bit? Okay, so I guess my point, my point here is for us to be successful as a community, we have to find the willpower to invest in ourselves. And a lot of people just push that aside and think, well, you just want to spend taxpayer dollars. You want to spend money. But what I'm trying to highlight is that for us to be successful, we have to, we've got to make things happen to create some revenue. And that's getting businesses to come here and open effectively and efficiently. If we do not have the staff power to do these things efficiently, we won't be a draw. So I want to be the first, and I hope this isn't out of, or improper, but Eric, you're the only man on an island in this department. And I am personally grateful that you're sticking with it and you're helping us through a very challenging time. To me, that is critical mass. When we have one person left in a department with an overwhelming workload, we owe it to that position to do anything that we can to add some efficiencies and update ourselves so that they can be more efficient and hire people that are qualified. And not just hire people, but retain people. That's the issue here. Multiple building officials, we keep turning people over because we can't keep them. So I hope we have a big discussion about that. And Eric, I, I hope to get to know you better, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ball.
So I guess the, the best question is that the department has evaluated what's needed, has come forward with a proposal that we think will make it easier to hire qualified individuals, to not only have immediate success, but potentially set us up for some long-term successes and develop a department so that we have it internally again, so that the public doesn't find frustration from multiple interactions with multiple individuals who are not invested in our community, not familiar with our community, and, and don't prioritize the work because they're external or contract. And the real goal here is not just easier on staff, but ultimately better customer service for our public, being able to process the paperwork, because this is a very specific skillset. And it's really, really important. And we are a full-service city. So it's not like you come in and go through a portion with us and then we send you to a private company to deal with something else. You're going to deal with the electrical department. And having our building division understand our electrical department is really important. Having our building department understand and be able to interact with the public on behalf of all the other departments, they don't interact on their own, is a higher demand than a lot of communities, I think, have on their, on their building inspectors. And so am I wrong in reading this? Or is that the right interpretation that you've really looked at this and said, in order to have a healthy department, these, these are some ideas we want to put forward?
Yes. So we, we have thoroughly analyzed this. And I want to say, we've probably been analyzing this over a year and, and kind of playing with ideas of how to make it work, looking at other cities and what they're doing or what they have done. And I have to say that I know I often hear it said, we're Long Polk, we're different. You are so right, because I think we are, we are different in the manner how we are going to address this. And I think it will be successful and we'll see where it takes us and how we do. But again, I go back to that, I hear from the community, I hear from our council, we want this level of service. And to get that level of service, we need that level of technical experience from the employees, the applicants that we get in here. And I think by making this change, we should be closer to where we need to be to get them in.
Thank you for that clarity. Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to say that if it's one thing that COVID had taught us, has taught us, and I think this should have been since before, but I think COVID has really put a spotlight on it, is that there is a need for reorganization. I think whether you're in corporate America or even local government, you know, I think trying to find more modern ways and efficiency, trying to create a better efficiency flow through the, through the workday and through the processes that need to happen at City Hall, I think it's very necessary. And I'm hopeful and I'm very grateful for, for you guys being able to kind of put, get into that think tank and put this together. And I'm hopeful that you will be able to attract, you know, the, the employees that you need to be able to fill these positions. Because part of the problem, and it's not just local government, but again, talking corporate America, part of the problem is finding the people out there. There is major gaps in employment and for, for a lot of industries. And so I'm hopeful to see this in, in motion and that it will bring, I think, the much-needed business-friendly, the true business-friendly approach that we need to have at City Hall for people that are coming in and wanting to develop business. So I love to hear when there's change. I think change is good and I'm excited.
So if there's no other questions, we'll go to public comment on item nine. The number to call, it's 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your television, computer, or radio because the feedback created makes it difficult for us to hear you. Were there any written comments on item number nine?
No ma'am, nothing.
So public comment on item number nine is open. The number to call is 805-875-8201. Good evening. You're live in the Long Polk City Council meeting. Are you ready to give public comment?
I am.
Okay, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, this is Leah from Long Polk, Leah Braitman. And I just wanted to say how nice it is to see a council that's willing to listen to staff. I think Christie's been around long enough to know what Long Polk needs. She's there on the front lines. And like I said, it's, it's so refreshing to have a council actually listen to staff and, and move on their recommendations. I know there's, you know, an idea to pay less because it is Long Polk, but like that famous quote that you dress for the job you want, I think we should pay people for the city that we want. So I don't think there's anything wrong in paying a competitive wage to bring talent here to Long Polk to make it better. Thank you all very much. Hope you're having a great night. Bye-bye.
Thank you. The number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, computer, or radio to avoid the feedback that makes it difficult for us to hear your public comment. Seeing no one additionally call in, we will close public comment on item nine and bring it back to council, either for further discussion or a motion. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move staff recommendations and give it a blessing that hopefully this plan will work.
I'll give it a second.
And we have a second. Any additional questions? Councilmember Ball. You're good? All right. Seeing no additional questions, let's vote. And that passes five zero. Thank you. Before we move to the final item, does any member of council desire a five-minute break? All right. We'll take a five-minute break. I heard some coughing and, and if-
I know, I was trying to get you a break. So we'll be back in five minutes.
Let's just pause.
So most cities, I won't say all, but most cities will have some kind of a goal-setting session typically every two years. That two years is set a lot of times because that's when election comes up, and if they have a new council member onboard, they want to make sure that the goals still all align. Or in our case, we have the budget, which is a two-year cycle, and we have a new council member on, so we're sort of double teaming here. During that period, the goals are really designed for a couple of reasons. One is to make sure that the council all is cohesive, that they're one unit going in the same direction. You can have councils going in five different directions, and it's very difficult for staff to try and figure out how to budget. So once we get that down, then the priorities set in, and that's like the next level down on, you know, where should we try to concentrate. Sometimes the councils themselves will help direct staff on the priorities. Sometimes staff will come back during the budget process and say, okay, the goals that you set, here's some of the priorities that we think we can focus on and be successful on. So that's what we're going to go through here. We do have goals, and we do have some priorities from the last time. We do have to remember when these were set, and these were set back on March 9th, 2019. So that was before that good old pandemic hit. So that was a big one. That took us out and took a lot of things away from us as other cities also. So back last month, the council asked to bring these back to discuss, but we also ended up doing a city survey. We'll get to that in a minute, too. We had 732 people put in for that. We ended up with, besides the check-the-box, which one do you categorize first, second, third, we had 50 pages of comments. And so we couldn't put all 50 in here. So we did, and you'll see in a second, the word cloud, so you can see where most people want to look to focus their attention. So what was approved back in March of 2019, there was four of them, and these are very general in what a goal should be, but they also hit what most cities tend to do. Most cities want public safety, they want fiscal responsibility, they want, you know, community involvement and whatnot. So we have four, they're not much, I say much different, they're written a little differently, but they all entail the same that other cities will do. And that was ensure a safe and supportive city through fully-staffed and equipped public safety departments. Implement a community development program that improves opportunities for growth of our residents and businesses, so an economic development-related type goal. Provide support and partnerships that empower community members and volunteers' ability to improve Lompoc. So like a volunteer program, a lot of cities will have a volunteer person that organizes all of that. And then again, determine a sustainable financial plan, because we all want to make sure we're headed in the right direction. I did add a lot of notes to the staff report, I won't go through every single note, but they're in there. So in the public safety piece, we have done substantial amounts. Our HR department, working with police, have gone above and beyond to try and recruit police officers. Different things that they've done, we've gone from maybe three times a year doing testing, to the most we can do now is every 45 days per the post standards. So we're testing people that want to be a police officer every 45 days, and that's the beginning process. If they pass the test, then they have to go into the physical portion of the test. And if they pass that, we'll do interviews. We have background checks. I mean, it's a very rigorous position to go through, because you're entrusting this person with everybody's safety. They've done a great job. They did find eight new officers for us, but again, they do have to go through the post academy. They then have to come out of that, hopefully passing it, and do what's called field training officers, FTO. That's where they go with an experienced officer. And the training at the academy is about six months. The FTO training is somewhere between six to eight months. So it takes a long time to get a person from stepping into the door to giving them their own patrol car to go out on patrol. Having new, the HR department did hire eight new officers, which is astounding. That's really good. And over that same period of time, unfortunately, we lost 11 officers. So we had a net reduction of three officers. So if they hadn't done all that hard work, we would have been in a position that would have really not been a favorable one for the city. We also were able to go out, though, to meet some of those goals, and we did purchase four new police patrol cars. Most of the patrol cars that we still have have over 100,000 miles on them. They're far past their life expectancy, so we're going to be working in this new budget to try and figure out a way to get at least four more cars, so we can remove some more of those. And the council just recently did approve the purchase of a fire engine. So if everything goes as planned, we'll get that new engine here July 1st, give or take, but it'll have to be after July 1st, because that's where the budget would kick in to pay for it. To give you an idea, I just found out from our fire chief that the two frontline engines, which are roughly 20 years old or more, both of them were in the shop. They did get one back. Eight hours later, it was back in the shop. So they're using the ladder truck, which is 28 years old, the rescue truck, and I believe you have one other backup, one older backup. So we're going to try and figure out a way to get a second new one, if possible, and retire some of these very old fire trucks. So we've made some progress, is my point, on this particular goal. Implement a community development program that improves opportunities for growth of our residents and businesses. I think through tonight, you've heard Kristi just commenting and brainstorming on how we can do better. You've heard the planning department, how we're going to go and streamline some of the different areas. So I think that in itself has been a success for us. There's more notes in there on that one, but I'll also go on to the one we've had some issues. Provide support and partnerships that empower community members and volunteers' ability to improve Lompoc. The biggest problem is we're just short staff again. It's who's going to take on that ability to be the volunteer coordinator and try and get these different groups in here. We know there's people out there that want to help. It's just how can we get out there and do that with a limited staff that we have? So that's an area that we're open for any kind of suggestions on how we can do that while maintaining safety and, you know, making sure the city isn't in any kind of liability or any cause for some liability. And last one's determine a sustainable financial plan. I want to thank the voters in Lompoc. They did approve the 1% sales tax. That was fantastic. That's going to help us out substantially going forward. We have the cannabis tax that's helping, you know, that's helped us through this pandemic. That's one of the things the finance director talked about just during the pandemic, how much that has increased on the cannabis sales tax. It's been very helpful for us going forward. And as we talked earlier, we're going to be looking at some financial advisors, excuse me, coming in and talking to us as a workshop on pension obligation bonds to see if that's a direction that the council would want to take. So we haven't stopped working on anything just because of the pandemic. We've actually done quite a bit during that period of time. However, then we go to the, from the goals to the priorities, and there was 11 different priorities. This one has been a little tougher to do. So out of the 11, six of them, we haven't really been able to do much. So market rate, housing incentives, business incentives, public safety personnel retention program, the retrofit of Fire Station 1, fund the savings of construction of a new fire station and a police station, rehabilitation of all the turf at city parks. There was another one. We just don't have the funding at the moment. You know, we're working towards that. We're trying to be creative as we can to come back and do something where we can hit some of these. For instance, on the turf, it may not be turf, but we have the brand-new playground going in at Beatty Park, and that was through a grant that we received. So as also discussed tonight, we have the grant team. We're still going through, and I think we've been very successful over the last couple of years on getting grants. We've seen a number of different projects happen through grants. We have the, another one was the Pioneer Park restrooms. That was another priority, upgrade the restrooms at the park. We have another grant to do that one. So we'll keep moving forward and trying to get as many of those done as we can. Improve customer service, as Kristi said, through some of her work that she's been doing, that's going to be improving. We also had earlier in the year, a full from myself all the way through the city was, you know, customer training services, trying to get everybody onboard on how and what we should be doing, and, you know, acting and reacting with the public. You've seen tonight, too, greater efficiencies. Trying to think outside the proverbial box, how do we do this with the staffing level we have, with the financial constraints we have? What can we do? I think we've been able to find some better ways on doing that. Project tracking goes back again to community development. We've already implemented a new system for plan checks, so the plans can come in electronically. They don't have to come in with five or six different sets of plans. So that'll help from a cost savings for the developer who's coming in. It'll help from a ability of us, instead of sending out, we'll save three days, just mailing the plans out to our consultants. And then the time it takes to just look at them, you can pull them up on the big screen, you can add the notes and everything else. So we have hit some, those first five or six, though, have been difficult, because we just, the general fund is in such a depleted condition, we haven't been able to do that. So then we went into the community survey, and we took the same goals that were there from 2019. We placed them out. We asked the public to prioritize them. We also said, and I mentioned at one point, to give us that box where it says, "Any other suggestions?" And there were about 50 pages of different suggestions. So when we came down to it, it said, what was number one, fully-staffed and equipped. That was 65% of the people that entered. That's what they wanted to see. Sustainable financial plan, that came in second. Business growth and development came in third, and community partnerships and volunteers came in fourth. So it's, if you look up on the screen, it pretty much says that public safety stands out amongst everybody there. And then we went on to another question, and another one that popped up was gang violence, homeless issues, the homeless population, public safety, gang enforcement. So they're all sort of the same, you know, the public safety issue is what we keep going back to. So from a standpoint of the staff and myself, we're going to probably be looking at as much as we can into the public safety, but we're also going to need the council to say, you know, are these the same goals we want? They were there in 2019. Some things have changed, some things haven't changed. The priorities, you know, do we want to continue down with these 11? Some of them we're still not going to be able to fund, so do we want to keep those in there? So tonight, it's your chance to discuss, are these the goals we want to see? Are these the priorities we want to see? Is there something different we want to see? Whatever you choose, my recommendation from a goal standpoint would be that once the goals are either affirmed, changed somehow, to then task, not the council, but the staff, with creating some priorities that we can bring back for the different budget hearings, and have the council discuss and decide if that's what they'd like to see or not. So with that, I will turn over the discussion to the council.
Thank you for giving us an update on what you have been able to accomplish and where the roadblocks have existed, especially given, as you said, we had this great workshop, full community participation, and then we had COVID. And that has unfortunately not just affected our city, but lots of communities across the US and the world in trying to get things accomplished. The second thing I would remind council is, we, this is a process, and we can ask questions right now, and then we also need to take public comment. So this is an opportunity to get some clarity from staff about some things, and then get some public input, and then bring it back for more detailed decisions or directions after we've taken public comment. So, yeah, are there any questions for staff regarding any of this? Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, Mr. Truban, page three of five here, and determine a sustainable financial plan. I feel it might be very important to add some verbiage in here to the point of, yeah, we've gone ahead and we've did a fresh start with the PERS, but there's no mention of the money that was set aside and the positions that are going to be funded with that 1% here. So I mean, it kind of misleads the fact that that money all went to a reset, and now we're looking at getting a bond, when actually, we're going to have, what, approximately a million and a half a year savings, 20 million over the 15 is what we were figuring, an early payoff at 13. How many million were we going to have left after we pay the PERS? We funded three more police positions, 1.75 parks, and there were still several hundred thousand dollars left that we're going to allow staff to use for whatever. So I feel that that should be reflected in the sustainable financial plan, because this does not tell the whole story of the 1% sales tax.
No, that's true. And the problem we're having right now, just with the COVID, with the reductions, that's reduced our surplus substantially that we thought we were going to have for now. Now, when this is all over, we're hoping that we'll go back up again.
Councilmember Cordova.
Yeah, I was going to say that it would have been, I guess that would have been the game plan had we not had a pandemic immediately after the sales tax passed. But unfortunately, with the effects of the pandemic, we are, we have seen reduction in funds going into the general fund. We have seen businesses that have gone away, and I think we'll continue to see that. And so there's been a major impact. Luckily, we've had some offset, but I don't think that necessarily that plan that Councilmember Starbuck is referring to, which was initially what we had thought, is all the way there due to the pandemic, correct?
That is correct. We just suffered as all the other cities. We didn't suffer as much as some of the tourism-based cities, which was very nice.
Yeah. Councilmember Ball.
A couple of quick things. First off, thank you for the presentation, for the update on that. I want to commend the community, 732 people. That's a substantial amount of the community taking this seriously. And I know I heard from several people that wish they could have given different input, more I heard from several people that wish they could have given different input, more input, but just the fact that we had so many people take their time to provide us some direction is incredibly helpful. Obviously, it's a four to one margin between items one and two. So we go from 65% of the folks are worried about public safety, and the next thing is a sustainable business plan or financial plan. Can you elaborate? I, I just want that to sink in so that everyone knows, like, no one should argue that the priority here is to keep our community safe and do anything that we can to get us there In a different mode, can you talk about some of the impacts of the pandemic? It's mentioned here about retirement and how that has, has kind of pushed us up against the law a little bit.
From a staffing perspective, we've lost a number of people. You know, our finance department dean usually has four people working on budget, including so three plus himself, and he's down to himself now because of all the retirements. He was down 50% in staffing due to retirements. Fire, I know, has lost some people. There's another one coming up in the near future. Police, you know, it's just, it's a lot of places there. We're, we're sort of on that teetering on, during the pandemic, some people have said, you know, I'm, I'm just going to call it a day. I don't want to have to go in and expose myself, so, or not in that way, but expose themselves to the pandemic. And so they said, I'm going to call it a day, and they retire. Others are getting close to it. If you look at our, and I forgot, I don't know if Gabe required, remembers how many people are at the age of retirement right now, but it is substantial. So, you know, we're, we're in that position where we really need to bring in new, new blood, fresh blood, blood into the city.
Can you elaborate on the fact that we're very, very fortunate that some of our departments right now are run by folks who have come out of retirement to help?
Yeah, well, Eric, who you were talking to earlier, is out of retirement. Our finance director is out of retirement. Our previous fire chief, who just recently retired, was there. Our police chief is retired, and there's more. I can't remember everybody. Yeah.
So the reason I'm bringing that up again is to illustrate to the community that we do have to take this seriously, and this is, you know, this is critical mass in a big way here. The last thing I wanted to just mention and leave with everyone, and, you know, I'm the new guy, so I don't want to insist on anything, but out of the former priorities, there was 11 of those, numbers one through five, seven, you know, seven out of 11, there's just no funds. Two or three of these were, it's great news, as long as we keep getting grants. So again, we're looking at a list of priorities here where, sorry, no funds, sorry, no funds, hope we get some grants. I would just like to submit that I think this council can be a little more creative moving forward to start to tackle some things that we actually might be able to fund, to have a big list of things that just tell me we cannot do anything. That's not creative to me, so I'm hopeful that we can collaborate and come up with a, a better, more current list.
So something I haven't, excuse me, may I? I didn't bring up yet, and it's because I, I hate to bring up good news and it goes away, because then it lets everybody down. You know, I'm hoping that the CARES package that's in Congress or the Senate right now does go through. If it goes through, we've already received from some lobbyists what the different payouts would be to cities. This time, it actually entails local, which is us, getting some revenue, and it would be, for us, a substantial amount, which I would consider substantial. You know, right now, it's considered about $12 million. So that would help us out of this current situation we're in. But again, it's until they pass that, but that is what's under consideration right now. So if we can reach out, and that's not just the council or myself, but if the public wants to reach out to our senators and congresspeople, that, that would be something to help us out, say, please get this passed and help us.
Councilmember Cordova.
I agree with councilmember Ball with regards to, you know, trying to find what are the areas that we can impact. You know, having, having been a part of this initial, or this particular plan of action items that we wanted to tackle, or goals, I should say, and priorities back in March of 2019, we had this, and then we proceeded to adopt what I call a deficit budget. And it didn't make sense to me, and I was super new on the council, and I, I was super frustrated by it, but I want to continue to see from all departments, and I've stressed this to the finance director, and I've stressed this to you, Mr. Troop, as the city manager, I'd like to continue to see kind of what, what I'm seeing out of Ms. Alarcon in the sense of trying to restructure. What do we need, if we continue to do business the way we've always done business, and we know that we're losing edge, we're losing, you know, a lot of our resources, then we're not ever going to get anywhere. We have to get creative as to how we can function with limitations that we have in hopes of getting financial support from what's going on with the pandemic, obviously, and then being able to somehow generate a, an actual sustainable future for financial plan for Lompoke. Just simply saying that we don't have the money to build the fire station, and we don't have the money to retrofit the fire station, and we unfortunately don't have the money to provide, you know, business incentives. Business incentives right now would be such a major help for anybody coming into this, for small businesses coming into this community, or small businesses that are struggling to stay open, or, you know, to waver through all of this. And I know that there's, there's, there's support on the federal level that's coming in, so that's great for some of these businesses, and hopefully, they're getting that. But yeah, being able to actually come through this budget season and, and say, you know, focus on what are some of the areas that we can tackle and we can act, instead of just regurgitating the same information, that's what I'd like to see as well. And to challenge our, all of our departments to say, what, how do we change the wheel? How do we improve what we have, and what can we do?
Councilmember Vega.
Jim, the restructuring of the way we prioritize our priorities here, I'd like to, the experience I have here seems like we've had categories up there that aren't able to be funded, and there's no movement forward. As councilmember Ball and, and the other councilwoman here, Ms. Cordova, mentioned, it's frivolous to have 11 priorities that we can't move forward on. As looking through these 11 priorities, many of them are related under, should be under one category, community development. I look at all this and I go like, you've got public safety, of course, economic balance is important. So we have all these, these, if we could come back and just condense this to a few things and give it back to staff, let the staff come back with a plan and a way of funding and tell us what can be done from where you, where you're, where you're at, especially with COVID right now. I mean, there's things here that are just going to be written down. So basically, with community development, you have business counter, website improvement, you have project tracking, greater efficiencies, improved customer service, you have business counter, business friendly. Those should be under one category, which we made a move forward here tonight. By knowing that there's, there's money on the, on the books right now, there's projects there, we just have to make sure we service them, so it's automatically going to be revenue generation. I think that's what we need right now. We need revenue generation, not waiting till we have to raise rates or do something to get through this. So I'm hoping that we can condense this to a more usable, pliable plan that'll work with you guys, with staff, instead of just the council putting down a list of priorities so they feel good, but nothing happens. I think that the, I think public safety, absolutely, is where we're at. It's going to take care of crime, it's going to take care of a lot of things that are here already. The next is community development. I think that without an economic plan of revenue generation here, by servicing the, the projects that are on the books, it's already there. I think we're moving forward there. So I just wanted to make that comment. I'd like to work with, with staff coming back instead of the, the council putting a whole bunch of priorities together that just really aren't realistic. Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
Let's see. I, I really appreciate those, those statements. I don't have anything against that. I think that all makes sense. I just wanted to piggyback off of councilwoman Cordova's statements and just, and I'm probably saying similar words, but I want to reiterate to city staff, and this is from the lowest to the top. We're, we're in the most trying times that we've been in, you know, financially for a few years now. Pandemics made that extra tough. I don't subscribe, as some in the community, that you, if you don't live in Lompoke, you cannot work effectively for Lompoke. I don't believe that. I do believe, however, that if you are working for the city of Lompoke, no matter where you live, as long as you're working for the city of Lompoke, you are working for the home team. And part of that comes, and I, I just want to encourage, as a, as a new leader trying to find solutions, I don't have all the answers, but I want to reinforce what Ms. Cordova said, is inspiring that creativity within staff. And it's not just creativity when we have the money to spend the, to do something magical, but to do that hard work and that due diligence, to come up with ideas that maybe we had never considered. So I just really want to encourage everyone at any level city staff to feel free and open to reach out with ideas, suggestions. It doesn't mean they're all going to fly, or that any of it can work, but I want you to know that at least in this seat, you have someone that wants to have that conversation. And any way that we can make the city, department by department, more efficient, ultimately save the taxpayers money potentially, and make our city work a little bit better, I think we need to do that. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Cordova.
You know, in, in thinking about what both councilmember Ball and councilmember Vega just said, and when I put it together in my head, I think to myself, the last couple of years that I've been on council has been a lot of, what I felt was dictation from the council to staff. But yet, the way the process, I believe, is supposed to work, when we receive these, these staff reports, it's, it's a recommendation from staff to council. And if truly what councilmember Ball is saying could work, I think what councilmember Vega is saying, consolidate this, bring forth a plan to council, instead of us dictating, I think we already know what the priorities are. We have them here, the community also, the members that participated also spoke about what is important to them. Public safety is number one on everybody's mind. And so I would love to see some bright ideas come forward and, and actually have council take those and say, wow, I can't believe that, you know, we're actually able to, to come together and, you know, make, make this happen. But working together, I think, is the way we're going to do it. So I actually like what councilmember Vega said about, about staff being able to take these priorities, reworking them, and bringing them back to council and saying, here's what our plan is that we've come together, you know, and, and hope that this time it really does work. Because I, I was on the other side, you know, a couple of years ago, and I saw what the other side could look like, where, you know, staff brings recommendations, the council is sometimes not receptive to them, and that's okay, that we're not always going to agree, that's okay, the council reserves that right, right? So, but I think that we should try it and see what we can get out of the think tank that is the professionals that work for the city of Lompoke, whether they live in town or not. I think that we have a lot of talent and a lot of heart and a lot of love.
I agree.
That comes from our employees.
We'll go to councilman Vega and then to public comment.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Jim, I think a question for me would be, we've separated public safety for so many years. Why are the different categories of public safety, retention, pay, radios, equipment, fleet, why are they so separate? Okay? Why are they not all in one? And when you vote, or when you fund public safety, the people that are in public safety to maintain the safety of the personnel are not the ones that figure it out? Okay? Does that make sense? It's like, you send somebody out with a, a broke down vehicle, or, I'm just going to make this up here, okay? Let's just say we send them out with an old fire truck, okay? Is that safe for them? Is it safe for the people they're going to respond to? I'm saying we have to find a way to fund this mechanism instead of having to go and individually ask for permission. How do we do this, or we change the, the, the way that we're supporting our people, which will also be an incentive to retention, I believe? Because a lot of times, I can tell you, if they know we care and we know we're trying to stabilize their, their employment, it means something. You know, we're looking for people who have roots here, but they also want to be cared for, you know? How many times do you go to business and, or anything, or, and, and you feel like no one cares whether you go back or not? You know, I think that we all have that same, where we want someone to care. So that was just a question. I'm not sure why it all has to be separate. We have here vehicles, we hear about radios, we hear about this, we have that. Now, where, where's the line drawn where we send people out with, is it actually deemed substandard equipment? You were, you were telling me a story about the ladder truck, okay? Whether it doesn't get certified or not. Where is there a point to where a decision has to be made?
Well, that's where, you know, what we're trying to do, working with Dean and finance, a lot of cities, won't say all of them, but the best thing to do is, for this particular example, is you have the different replacement funds. So you'll have a replacement fund for all of the rolling stock cars, trucks, whatever it might be, and a replacement fund for anything that's electronic, you know, computers, radios, and that. We haven't been in a position to really fund that properly. There is, Dean's doing a, a lot of cleanup, you know, and this goes way, way back, not just the last few years, but back 10 or 15, 20 years. We're cleaning up how that is funded and how you account for it versus how it had been done. So we're, we're behind the eight ball right now. We should have, and Dean, I'm going to ask for that numbers on what we have in.
Eight million?
Yeah, how much we?
About $12 million.
So we have about $12 million rolling stock. That's fire, fire engines, police cars, pickup trucks and whatever else, and we have how much?
$10 million.
And we have about 2 million, we'll go high, $2 million worth of value still left in those rolling stocks. So we should have $8 million in the bank right now, if, well, 4 million, eight, close to $10 million in the bank, if it's 15. We're behind, so we're going to have to eat that elephant, you know, one bite at a time, because even if the CARES Act came through, you know, and said $12 million, we're still not able to fund all of that. So it's going to have to be something that we take as a budget priority and say, we're going to put a little bit aside every year and just keep building up that, that fund. That's how we're going to get to that part.
You know, I guess one more question, and then I'll, I'll give the floor up. I, I think that we have retrofit of the fire station, we had build a new fire station. Would that not be part of the capital improvement program instead of one of our council priorities? You know, wouldn't that be on a different, separate page, you know, so that we can separate the funding mechanisms for these? It's just a question.
Yeah, that, so something like that, building or retrofitting because of the size that it would take for the retrofit would come under our capital improvement plan.
Because it's on our priority list of funding that's not there. You get it? It's one of the 11, so I'm just wondering if there's a way of simplifying that so that we can clean it up. So I'll leave it alone. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff before we go to public comment? We will go to public comment on item 10. Remember to mute your television, computer, or radio as the feedback, feedback makes it difficult to hear you. Did we have any written communication, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Seeing no one call in, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. So I think the first thing council should do is reaffirm the goals. The four goals that we set in March of 2019 are still vital to our community. They're still broad enough. We still need to work on all of these things, and I think it makes sense to just reaffirm those goals. Unless anyone wants to tweak any of that, that would be, I think, the first step is for us to agree that those, those overarching goals are still a priority. step is for us to agree that those overarching goals are still a priority for our community. Councilmember Cordova.
I would agree. I think that those four goals are still very relevant to the needs of our community today and the, I think, the changes that we still need to see happen within our community. Are those goals set in priority order?
When we originally set them, they were not numbered, and I believe for the staff report...
I just numbered. I'm a numbering person.
So they aren't in any priority naturally, and there was a goal not to list in higher priority, but if this council wants to prioritize them based on the feedback from the survey, it is certainly an option.
And I was going to suggest that, based on the feedback of the survey, I think the one thing that we could do with these four priorities or goals is to actually prioritize them based on what feedback we received from the survey, from the public. So I would make that recommendation if the council sees it fit.
All right. Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to see the goal number three, the business growth and development. I'd like to see that clarified a little bit, because I think what we've seen tonight through the Community Development Department is going to be critical to that. So we need to clarify, what do we mean by that? I mean, or do we let city staff come back and reclarify what that is? Kind of vague.
Well, that's the goal of a goal, is to be a bit vague, because it's supposed to be broad and lack specifics. So the question is, the full phrase is, implement a community development program that improves opportunities for growth of our residents and businesses. So it's really broad in order to allow either staff or us to then pick things under that umbrella to focus on. So if you want that changed, what about it would you like to see changed? It still leaves it very broad.
Yeah. So what you said, did you just say that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, so...
It's not what it says here, but...
So on page five, these are the shortened versions of what the priorities were for our community.
Okay.
What our goals actually are, are on the first and second page. We have ensure a safe and supportive city through fully staffed and equipped public safety departments.
Okay.
Implement a community development program that improves opportunities for growth of our residents and businesses. Provide support and partnership that empower community members and volunteers' ability to improve Lompoc and determine a sustainable financial plan. Page five is simply the survey from the community reflecting what they see as a priority.
I got you.
And what Councilmember Cordova is recommending is that we take under consideration and rank those four that I just mentioned based on the community's input.
Yeah, the community development aspect of it is what I was looking for, because it empowers staff. Otherwise, it's just out there. You're right, it's vague, but it could be too vague. I think that we should empower ourselves, because we're actually the lead legislators here to empower them to help our community. So I think that we could probably, and maybe you can help me here, with tightening up the verbiage if you think necessary, but I'd like to empower our staff also to help with us.
I think the only word I might change is instead of program, say, department. Implement a community development department that improves, but we already have that department, and that's why I avoided that word last time around, was to empower staff by allowing them to look at their program and identify things that they could bring forward. And I think giving them a chance, as you've said, for them to come back with recommendations of how they could support this is an opportunity we should give first, rather than necessarily worry about wording for these really broad goals.
Yeah, and like I say, I'd like to condense them where they are not so broad, because I think that we have to focus right now. We're in a pandemic. We have the opportunity here to make something happen besides words and rhetoric and, you know, so if I could just clarify here, the Community Development Department, as we spoke about social media and the implementation of the Munis system and the planning and building, you know, one of the biggest things and the most beneficial things to be in business friendly would be to streamline our process. You know, I think I mentioned earlier that we don't have a webmaster. We don't have anybody doing that. So I'd like to hear from them, okay?
So that would be a priority?
Yes.
So instead of worrying about the verbiage of the goal, once we reaffirm this and say, we like our goals, they need to stay, and we should just prioritize them based on feedback from the community, we move to, what are some of our priorities? And what you just said would be input to give to staff for them to come back and be empowered to come up with the creative ideas. So what you're talking about is a priority under these goals. And so you're absolutely right, it's the next step. What I'm looking for is just for us to review these, reaffirm them, and then empower staff with the opportunity, with some direction from us, which are those priorities, but not so specific as we got last time around.
You know, thanks for your input. I just think that a little more specific during the pandemic would be beneficial. I don't think we should be shy about saying that we would like to see something that's measurable during this short term, because we're going to come back two years later and nothing's going to happen. That's why I don't want it to make it too vague. But thank you for your input, okay? I appreciate it.
Sure, sure. Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just again, piggyback on Ms. Cordova's comments. Again, the citizens of Lompoc have helped us out tremendously here. They've given us some guidance, and yes, we are the leaders, so to speak, but the community really is in the driver's seat here. So I suggest, along with what Ms. Cordova said, that we just reprioritize those four things. Those are, we all agree that those four items are important. My suggestion is to go, item one is ensure a safe and supportive city. The next one should be determine a sustainable financial plan, so that's number four. Number three would be the former number two, which is implement a community development program. And then the last one would refer to the volunteers. I mean, that's in alignment with what the community says. So I think that's pretty simple. Again, the devil's in the details, and that's to be determined through lots and lots of conversations. I know this is going to be a fun challenge for the city that has not been used to being challenged to come up with ideas, but hey, the pressure's on. But I'm excited to see what you guys can come up with, and we're going to support your efforts. So think deep and let's hit the sky running.
So I'll give the floor back to you, Ms. Cordova, but what it sounds like is you made a motion and Councilmember Ball clarified by stating what order those would be in, and so technically gave you a second. Would you like to confirm that yours was a motion so we can...
So I am going to confirm then that mine was a motion, but I'd like to amend my own motion and/or expand my motion based on what Councilmember Vega is asking for, which actually is also, I think, the same thing that Councilmember Ball was asking for. So aside from taking the four items and relisting them based on priority from the community feedback, we're giving it back to staff so that staff can, in this report, staff came up with all of the ways that they have tried and what hasn't worked and a few of the things that have worked. So the task now would be, here are the four items, now come back and bring us the actual, like, try to bring up specifics that can help you get to those goals in your departments, hit those goals. That way, it brings focus, like what Councilmember Ball was saying, that we need to kind of focus and make headway in the next couple of years. And I think that's what Councilmember Vega is looking for, is let's be specific. What can we do then? You know, because if we leave it too broad, I get what Mayor Osborne is saying, it needs to be broad, but I think that if, but staff knows they're in the field, they're in the trenches. They know what they're going to be able to do. So when they bring back the list of priorities broken down with what can be done immediately that we can start chipping away at, I think that would be a great plan to present before the council, such as we did in determining the sustainable financial plan for Lompoc, and we listed these 11 things. Well, maybe some of these things can't be done, and maybe some of them can now be done with certain funding that may come in from, you know, the COVID relief. But if they can't be done, then let's just, I'm not saying do away with them, but let's drop them down or put them in the back burner, because we know we cannot get to those right now. But then what can we do? Identify elements that we can tackle so that we can meet, I think, everyone's needs and get somewhere without leaving it so broad that we're here again two years from now discussing the same thing. PD hasn't gotten radios. Fire Department, we still don't have a plan for how their safety is going to be, you know, handled in the future, currently and in the future. And so that's what my recommendation would be, is that we have, accept those four, that we align them based on the community feedback, and that we have staff come back with a list of, I guess, action items that they can start actually making headway in those areas. Again, that's not going to be the full list, because we know the needs of this community is big and it only keeps growing. You know, our community is changing, and some people might say, oh, well, we only need, you know, 39 officers or 43 officers, because we still have the same population as we did in 1960. But the reality is, is that our population, even though we're still 40-something thousand, the need or the demographic of that population has changed and the needs have changed, and the demand of the police department has changed along with the demand of the fire department. So again, taking all those things into consideration, I think that the department heads, the professionals in those departments are the ones that can best say, this is where we can start making headway. Bring it back to the council. Mayor.
That was my potential next step. So I wanted to get some real clarity just on that first part of your motion about reaffirming the goals, and then have a second discussion regarding direction back to staff based on that. So I would ask that you leave the first half of your motion with the adjustments by Councilmember Ball for those priorities. We clear that deck and then return to the second half of your request, only because I think there's some additional contributions to priority to give feedback to staff that I'd like to expand on just a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do you agree to the first half of the motion where you numbered the priorities and we're all good with it?
I second the first half.
All right. So we have the motion on the floor to reaffirm the goals, to number them based off the survey, and it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions before we vote on that section? Is Madam Clerk clear? Okay, awesome. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you for that. Now to Councilmember Cordova and Councilmember Vega's point. You're absolutely right. The council-driven priorities last time really were unattainable either from the get-go or as a result of the impact of COVID. And asking staff to come back with projects, concepts, is important. What I would like to make sure is that we have given staff any of those priorities that we personally think are important as something to consider. For instance, Councilmember Vega has mentioned webmaster, and making sure that our website is robust and accessible and easy to use and managed appropriately and not on the burden of trying to do too much. So I want to make sure anything like that actually gets communicated to staff tonight on top of the idea of look into your own departments, identify your absolute priorities to accomplish some of these things. And for me, I look at public safety, and while we necessarily can't get you in two years, your fire station or your police station, what we can do is get you the equipment that you need. So, you know, making sure we get you the radios and the body cameras and get you the vehicles and get you the equipment or the equipment to make it safer for you to work in that environment, because something about the infrastructure is lacking, as I know the fire department is, as far as the ventilation process, to make sure we're pulling out all of the contaminants as you return, not just off your bodies, but off of the environment you're returning to. So I think it's important that any of those things that we might already recognize, that we affirm to you, that we want to see you bring back. Like, you know what your absolute needs are, you know what your budgets look like, and we want to help you be successful, because if we help the departments be successful, the community is successful. At the same time, we don't want to forget those long-term goals. So if there is something that's a priority for you, that you have an idea about moving forward, about making sure we're setting money aside for some of those long-term investments, some of those capital improvement plans, they are part of the budget plan. We do have to carve out each budget cycle, what we're setting aside for the longer goals we need to accomplish. Otherwise, we'll never do that. So I think it's still important, as much as we all talk about in the next two years, what can we say we've done successfully as a community to not forget those long-term things and have to talk about them and plan for, you know, a little bit of it every little budget cycle, as Mr. Albro and Mr. Trup have already said. So I think it was really important to break that out and give you each a chance to say what something you see that you think is also important for staff to consider when they bring back. So, Councilmember Cordova.
Okay, so if that's the case, I would like to see from our finance department and our finance director and our city manager, which I have shared this before, I would like to see a budget model that actually starts to identify capital replacement reserves. And I don't know if it was ever there, and at some point in time, through some kind of process, items were eliminated because we had to make those hard decisions. But I don't think that they should ever be eliminated. A budget should never, you can't even call it a budget if it doesn't have the proper components and elements needed for the future planning of replacement and reserves and the purchasing of equipment that is needed for life safety and public safety. So even if we didn't allocate dollars to it, I want to see the element there. So that would be important to me. Another thing, I think, especially when we're thinking about our PD, I think I've seen it so many times that, you know, we're staffed, we're staffed. But I don't think that that's necessarily what they've been saying that they need, that there's a major problem with recruitment. So what I would like to see is us actually listen to what the PD's saying, think, what are the positions that are actually needed, as opposed to just saying, you know, we've staffed 43 officers, well, but we, think about positions. What do you need, you know? Do you need certain level of positions to be in place as opposed to just number of officers? So maybe that would be something that I think would help us move along with identifying and being able to maybe recruit and which would require us to obviously have to create a budget line item and allocate money that would actually go towards recruiting those specific positions that are needed in a department. I think we have a major, major flaw when it comes to, and I don't say flaw in regards to our planning. I think that because of the gaps of employment that we're seeing in some of our industries and some of our departments, a major area concern for me right now is our succession plan, both in PD and fire. How do we get to that point where we are able to recruit and retain laterals or, you know, the positions that we need to be able to support the operations of our fire department without having to quickly escalate someone that's just coming into the field and giving them a six-month or a year or two crash course on something that someone has been doing for 10 years or six years or 15 years? So three items that I'd like to see personally as a council member.
Thank you for that feedback. Councilmember Vega?
A couple of things I'd like to see also, through Dean, through Christie, the funding mechanism, as we spoke about earlier, for streamlining the building and planning department. That's future goals. We'd like to maybe start saving for it or just come up with a funding mechanism that for, in the near future, I think, Dean, you had a, you had a little plan there on how Munis could be integrated and what it's going to cost, okay? I think that we need to find out what the cost is to streamlining the building and planning process for ease of filing permits. We talked about DocuSign, we talked about electronically filing plans, plan checks. We need to see how we can move forward and implement this. Another comment I have is for public safety. I'm not sure if this is resolved or if it's still ongoing. We're using the water fund to, or we're planning on using the water fund to clean up the riverbed. I'd like to see the water fund used first to clear the plumbing problem up at the fire station one, if it's still an ongoing problem. I'm not sure if it's been resolved or not, you know, but from what we hear, let's start with public safety and their infrastructure. If we're going to really do this, you know, you guys have all heard that their bathrooms have backed up and maybe it's not, come on, water fund, plumbing, infrastructure, that's what that fund was meant for. Does that thing need to be replumbed? Do we have to, we have people that are sleeping there and they're doing this, so why don't we just take another look at it? I'm not sure, Jim, whether you have a report... I'm not sure, Jim, whether you have a report on that and find out if this plumbing's just falling apart or what happened there.
Well, that would, real quick on that one is under, oh, I just lost it here. Under the number four retrofit of Fire Station One, what we're looking at trying to do is put out an RFP for an engineering report that looks at the whole building to see what all it needs versus, is it just the plumbing? Is it just electrical? Is it, you know, have other issues that we don't know about? So that's, that's something we're trying to put forward in the budget.
Is that not a little vague, though, not addressing the actual today problem?
Well, it's, when you open the walls up, because that building's so old, you end up with other issues that you then don't know about. So having the person go in and give us a full-blown review of what it is, then we can prioritize. And the person might say, oh, no, no, those rafters are coming down soon. You might want to fix that before you fix the plumbing. So the idea was to see what it needed first and then prioritize that.
I guess it concerns me, you know, if they're living in substandard and you have an outhouse in front of the fire station. I'm not sure if it's gotten that far, but we need to do something, you know, if it is a problem that's, that's ongoing. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Did you want to throw webmaster in there, like you said earlier?
Did I not throw that?
Yeah, you did say that earlier. And I was just making sure, I'm helping you remember some of the things.
And the reason the web part of it is so important is because the website needs to be set up to interact with building and planning. Without, at one click, you know, you go to other cities and some other examples and, as you know, they have more money and whatever, I'd like us to be right there where we can just go and, I've gone to some websites, you can do just about everything and that will minimize their interaction here with you guys and, you know, and not interfere with your daily duties, you know? So yes, the website and the webmaster, I mean, the PIO is doing what she can, but if she's being multitasked to be the PIO and being the community liaison and being the webmaster, I think we can do better than that. Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
I'm going to just mention a few things, and again, I want to be careful not to have the city staff take this too specifically, so bear with me if I can. I tend to be all over the place. My apologies. Some issues that I feel are important, how we address them is definitely up for discussion, but if we talk about public safety, we have complicated issues there, all the way from homelessness to mental health issues to gang violence. So again, just filling a couple of positions is not a strategic thoughtful approach to addressing some of those oncoming and new issues that we're facing. So I'd love to hear some thoughtful feedback about unique approaches that other places have taken to address some of those things. I don't feel like we have to reinvent the wheel on everything, but I think that's a, I don't just want us to go back to status quo, which means full funding, without including thoughtfulness on how we address current issues today. And then I just, there's so much more I wanted to say, but I'll keep it simple. Back to city staff, Ms. Cordova had mentioned, you know, for staff to come back with action steps. And I know if I was on that side, that scares me a bit because that's a lot of pressure to come up with a viable action step. So I just want everyone at staff level to think about the benefit of ideas. Don't skip over ideas. Ideas are very, very valuable. Doesn't mean that's the answer. Just don't feel the pressure to get to an action step without conversing with either each other or with some of us to just banter about with ideas. There's a lot of communities throughout the state of California and the country that have adapted, they've become nimble, and they've addressed issues that they have in real time. We can do the same here, but it's going to have to be a lot more idea-based adaptive collaboration than we've ever had before. So again, I just, I know we need to get to the action steps. I know that we have to be specific, but I don't, I don't want anyone to skip the process of really thinking through this and coming up with ideas, even if they're off the wall. I want to hear them. That's all I got.
Councilmember Cordova.
I was just going to add one more thing to our city manager, Trup, and in consideration of what Councilmember Vega was saying about the fire station, you know, and when we're looking at the plumbing issue at the fire station or, you know, if we're having someone come in and kind of look at the whole, everything, the minute you touch that building, like anything else, and having done small renovations and major renovations to buildings myself, the minute you touch that building, you're opening up Pandora's Box, you know? And so thinking about when we go to touch that building, where does the relocation, what happens to that fire team that houses in that unit? Because I assure you, the minute you touch that building, whether it's a plumbing issue, electrical issues, or whatever, there's going to be some level of, you know, moving out or, you know, that's going to need to happen. So again, think that through also and consider that when we're looking at the full scope of plan because we can't leave them in there when we have torn walls and plumbing that's getting potentially replaced. And, you know, some things might be okay, but some things may not. And so even staging any kind of renovation that you're doing, God, the PD as well, you know, I would love to be able to just build two brand-new ones, a PD and a fire station, but it's not going to happen in the next two years, sorry.
Is that FEMA grant still available? I'm just curious.
No, that's, yeah, we just need to start pitching in, just community to start pitching in.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'm just going to mention, excuse me, in the fire station, we've already got a seismic retrofit study done on it. There's already been all the determination of where the crew would stay, where the trucks would be positioned. This was done several years ago. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, Brian, or not, but all the documentation is there.
We can find that.
Thank you for all the contributions. Again, much like it was in March of 2019, public safety is priority number one and still is for me. I ask that all departments look at how we can approach public safety, not just tasking our police and fire department to do it. There are certain limitations that you can only address from your approaches. And so, you know, making sure that you ask for the, not the infrastructure, but the equipment you absolutely need in order to provide the services that are required of you are priority. It's our job to understand the infrastructure needs and the long-term issues and advocate for that and keep reminding us of those. But to the other departments, if there's a possibility that you see an opportunity where something you're doing improves public safety, whether that's the recreation department and what kind of programs it's putting on so that our youth have opportunities away from gangs, that helps with public safety. If there's something in the parks department that you need that makes our parks safer to be in so that parents feel comfortable sending their kids out to the park because it's well-lit, because the equipment's safe, because you've been able to mow and get rid of the gophers and no one's worried about breaking an ankle, so at the parks level, there are opportunities where you can address. From urban forestry, you know, really look at your budgets and look at the neighborhoods and where you're going and is there something that needs to be done so that shrubbery isn't causing a dark spot in the community, isn't creating light blockage, isn't creating a corner that's difficult to see around? So I think taking an eye of public safety across all departments is one way we're going to be better at creating a safe community because it's not just the direct impact of police and fire that makes our community feel safe. It's, are our parks safe to go to? Are they good programs for our kids to participate in? Do our seniors have opportunities to get out of the house and connect with people so they don't feel isolated? And so that's, that's an important part of public safety that every department needs to look at, how do we affect that and how can we contribute so that the community as a whole feels safer? For that community and economic development aspect, again, I, the steps staff is making to restructure, to address their known deficiencies based on not just personnel but services because as we demand more services, it is people-related. People provide those services. So even if we buy good software, it still takes somebody who understands that software to manage the software and process it. So again, it's just as important to look at the big picture and if there's software out there you need and there's personnel or there's training, put that in there. Put in the time for the training. Put in the need for that support because that's also retention. So we've got a retention issue, not just in police and fire, but as we heard earlier this evening, across the board, we're having a silver tsunami, as they say. We have individuals of a retirement age who are able to retire and we haven't had individuals see city government as an opportunity for a wonderful career. And so what programs can we support that don't necessarily take money all the time, but because we're making those connections, because staff's setting aside the time to make those connections? And then where do you need the funds for that additional training, for that additional recruitment, and in all departments? Because again, it's happening across and that legacy plan is really important, those succession plans are really important because when we aren't successfully backfilling those positions, we do end up with, as we've heard earlier this evening, a conversation with seven different people and that leads to a frustration. And then the last part that's a priority for me is how do we, how do we, as the vaccination is going out, reopen? Because us sitting here talking to staff is not what we want to be doing. We really do want to be open to the public and the sooner we, when we move into that red level as we begin to get the vaccination out, what are we doing to get ourselves open? And open in a way that is connected with the community. Are we open the kind of hours the community's looking for, not what's best for us doing the job? Because we've always thought it's eight to five or nine to five for those departments that are that, but are we creating an environment that says we're open for business back to the community because we're going to have to be creative in our way? We support those trying to get back on their feet. And then last but not least, if we do get that funding from the federal government, all these surrounding communities that do have general fund reserves, that have a lot of money, they're the ones putting these programs in place that are incentive-based. They're the ones helping support their businesses. We don't have that. We don't have general fund reserve. We don't have much of a general fund. And so I think it's really important that we not only replenish our general fund, but we look at some of that as to how do we set up funds to help some of our local businesses and our local residents recover if that does come through. So keep that in mind. What opportunities, what access to funds do we as a city have the ability to make the request and the application for that we can then in turn distribute back into the community? Because that's what our community's asking for and our hands are so tied, not on so many on the list because we don't have those kinds of reserves and we don't have those kinds of things funded. So if at any moment there's additional revenue out there from grants or COVID funding or something that we can turn into that, it's going to be vital to our community and it's something other communities are able to do that our hands are tied. So, Councilmember Ball.
You helped me remember one of my priorities.
Yes.
Thank you. No, it goes back to revenue and I won't, I won't beat around the bush. I would love to hear how we enhance revenue because we have a lot of things to pay for and catch up on, but I would like for that to not start with, it may be necessary down the road, but not start with just increasing rates and taxes on citizens. And it also doesn't include the cares or the potential POB, which is pension obligation bonds. Come back with a plan as soon as possible on what options this city council might take to bring a more equitable approach to revenue generation within our community. Because at the end of the day, all of these things that we've mentioned are things that we're behind on, that we can't afford. So until we deal with how do we afford it, that's priority number one.
Councilmember Cordova.
No, I was just going to say that, so with the second part then to my motion, with the consideration of everything that was said from each of our council members, then my motion still sits on the floor. And I was just going to say, to include the consideration of what everybody said.
Absolutely. I'm so glad you brought that up because that was, that was going to be my next request is, would you like to, say, take all of the feedback and add it to your motion? So, awesome.
I do.
I will give you a second on that. So to staff, the motion is basically, we're empowering you to go back and, you know, really, really be proactive and take this opportunity to identify how best to help us help you and help the community. And we've all provided some ideas that, I've written down all the notes, I know many of you, as those departments have written the notes, and, you know, it's a tough budget cycle and we know it and we respect that and we really want to work with you. And I think that's, that's what we're saying with our motion and with our ideas of what we'd like to see as some priorities. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second Councilmember Cordova's motion and, you know, maybe we should throw in there getting munis where we can pay our bills online.
Well, that is starting next week. That big transition is happening. And we'll remind the public as we close the meeting. So it's been moved, it's been seconded, it's been third. We're about to take a vote and almost get it all the way around if Councilmember Vega has nothing else to add.
One more comment, okay?
All right.
Fire Station One, Jim, if you could look back, you know, it's being, we're being led to believe that Fire Station One is fragile because of the earthquake retrofit. Going back through some of my notes and stuff, maybe I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but it shows that that station was rebuilt back in 1978. And if that's a true story, could we maybe get an update on that? If that's true and to what extent was it rebuilt? Which would tell me that maybe if it's not infrastructure or structure, is it fragile or is it not fragile? Okay? Because if it was original, then I would say, okay, but is it in better condition than we know based on that? So 1978 is what my notes said, that the station, Fire Station One, was rebuilt because we're talking about plumbing and everybody's afraid to fix the plumbing, but if in fact it was a structural fix back then, we need to help these guys out.
I can get with our fire chief and also maybe.
Yeah, just for clarification, okay?
We can try and find that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
But I'll just say, that was a year before I was born, so that dates me. So that dates me.
Me as well.
And let's keep in mind that the purpose is to bring our operations into the current needs of our community, not just a building that could still potentially be okay, but does it function as it needs to function for the safety, for the operation, and for the services that we need to provide to this community and the needs of this community in 2021 and beyond.
So we, we have a couple additional requests, but they don't need it because you're already working on that information and can bring it back. We have a motion on the floor. We've had some additional discussion. Any additional clarification that our clerk needs? Okay, great. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. I thank you all. I know that it's a difficult year and that this was a difficult time to do this, but I think we'll get through it. And I'm confident staff has some great ideas that they've been holding back and I'm eager to see. Our final communication session from the public, written communications. Madam Clerk, anything?
No, nothing.
Thank you. Final oral communications for two minutes, 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your television, computer, or radio so the feedback makes it difficult to hear you and it helps to turn that off. You have two minutes to speak on city matters, either already discussed this evening or you'd like to see us discuss or you're concerned about or want us to be aware of. Good evening. You're live in the Long Poak Council meeting. You have two minutes to provide public comment.
Good evening, City Council. This is Chris Braxton, citizen of Long Poak. I just wanted to give some good feedback. It was interesting to hear the priority goals for the upcoming two years. I think that just food for thought that number one moving forward within the next two years should be the economic road to recovery or the COVID recovery, as you guys are all talking about. There's so many unknown variables on what's going to happen, what's going to take place when you guys start looking at your budgets, you know, with no taxes coming in, even though the supplemental money coming in from COVID, that's, you know, just as of right now. But there's just a lot of what ifs. You know, people are suffering from COVID fatigue, COVID common sense, as we start to come out of this pandemic. as we start to come out of this pandemic. You know, people are going to be able to get out. Nonprofits are going to be able to do things. And we're just going to have to restructure a lot of the things within the construct of the city. So your parks, you know, vents are going to be smaller. There's just a lot of what-ifs. So I urge you guys, just as a food for thought, that as you move forward, your number one priority really should be the COVID road to recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your television, computer, or radio to reduce the feedback that makes it difficult to hear. This is a two-minute final oral communication for the evening. Seeing no additional calls, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Ball, comments, meeting reports, requests?
Yeah, just real quick, a couple of things. Aside from doing a lot of homework on League of California Cities, which is very informative, just two reminders of some things that are important coming up. There's the State of Annenberg that's coming up here at the beginning of March. It's March 4th. I think you plug in at 11:30, but it starts at noon. If you're interested, I think the access to that or to sign up is through the Lompoc Chamber. But again, to hear what's happening at the base, it's important for us to stay tuned into that. And then today, the rent and utility assistance for the county through United Way went live on their website. So for those that are curious about possibly getting rent and utility assistance, the website to check that out is unitedwaysb.org/rent. Again, that's unitedwaysb.org/rent. There's lots of details, information on that. But it doesn't hurt to check it out and see if that could be a help.
Thank you. And checked the box on my repeating that, so I appreciate that. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, just one thing. I'm going to throw this out to the council about the urgency ordinance on fireworks. Separate of the $10,000 that the fireworks manufacturer pays us, in rough numbers, each booth generates about $5,000 of revenue for the city. Two booths, $10,000. $10,000 from manufacturer, $20,000. In urgency ordinance, we get three more to participate. We're at $25,000 now on the booths plus the $10,000. It's something to think about. I can see where some of the nonprofits got a little confused with it. But, you know, we do generate quite a bit of money into the general fund with these outside of the $10,000 that were given by FANOM and TNT.
Do I have a second or a third to support him?
Was that a motion?
That was a council request.
Council request.
It's a request. I'd put it out there if somebody wants to go with me on it. I mean, it's...
Is that an emergency motion to extend it?
The urgency ordinance is what Mr. Troop and the attorney described at city manager reports.
It's a request to bring back an emergency ordinance in order to address this issue because that is the only way outside of changing the ordinance, which would take much longer. So councilwoman Starbuck is making a request for this to come back to us in order to open it back up.
I'll give you a second so we can get it back to discuss.
So there's a second on the floor. Is there a third? Seeing none, the request fails. Thank you for that feedback. Anything else? Councilmember Cordova.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to say we had a really good meeting tonight. Thanks, staff. I'd like to thank staff. I think the planning commission and the staff worked well. And we've got some good improvements toward building and planning. So on a positive note, if the community wants to go out there and see some improvements that the city's moving forward on, I encourage you to drive up to Beatty Park and see the playground equipment that's being staged. I drove up there and it made me happy to see that. So I think some people out there in the community would like to see some actual improvements happening there that are colorful. So thank you.
I attended the Northern California Power Agency's 101 conference. Basically, an update and reminder. All of that is recorded. And so I recommend to any of my fellow council members that are not members of the board and want the additional information, you can go and watch the NCPA in case you want more information about our membership in that agency. They did record all of it. It is interesting to get that review. As per the ongoing, every, twice a month, I attended the Santa Barbara County COVID-19 legislative briefings, the Santa Barbara City Area Government Board orientation. And the county was kind enough to provide a tour of the animal shelter to better understand in person what the issues are and what's going on with it. So if any of the council members who haven't taken that tour, I highly recommend because it does actually help us better understand some of the impacts it's having on our community. To the announcements, I thank councilmember Ball for bringing up the county's Renaissance Rent Assistance Program. It's designed for rent and utilities. A reminder, the city also has set aside its cares COVID fundings for utility assistance. So you could, if you still need the assistance, address utility assistance through our program and then look at the county's program for rental assistance as we don't have a rental assistance program right now. Please take advantage of these programs that are out there. They have their websites. The information's pretty straightforward. And they are providing assistance for those that need to help it. The websites do detail that. And even when you call our own staff, they're very happy to walk you through the one-page application to assist with utilities. We have had adjustments in our COVID public health order that may or may not have made it out to the community. So regarding gyms, they are now allowed to offer one-on-one fitness training indoors. And so be sure and check the specifics of that. But I know it's been an impact on our gyms having to be closed. For our musicians and artists in our community, live performances are now allowed. But there are some specific parameters about where you're performing and what the limitations of those sites are. So again, go check the public health order. But I know it's really important for a lot of our artists to begin to be able to make money again and perform, not just perform because you enjoy it, but also sustain your practice in art. There was also changes to religious and cultural ceremonies, being allowed to operate indoors with at least a 25% capacity and also wedding ceremonies. So again, go look at the public health order on the Santa Barbara County Public Health website. It has all the details. There are changes as the vaccination moves forward. The over-65 vaccination program is beginning. Please utilize the county's website to register for that or check with your pharmacy or your doctors in case they're participating in that. The more vaccinations we have, the sooner you'll be able to see the community open up. So if it's offered to you, some days at the end of the vaccination process, some of the pharmacies have had extras and you might be in the building and picking up your diapers and somebody says, "Would you like the COVID vaccine?" The answer should always be yes because the more we can get this done, the sooner you'll see your community reopen. And that's what we need. No council requests this evening. It's been a long meeting. I really appreciate the council and how well you are looking to listen to each other and be supportive of staff. It's really important as we move forward and get through this recovery. So thank you all for that. We will adjourn this meeting until our next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on March, not 16th, but March 2nd. It says 16th, and I was about to read it, and it's March 2nd. So I wanted to make sure I said the right. You were hoping. So it's March 2nd. I'm so glad I didn't just read March 2nd. See you all then, if not before.